Ladies and gentlemen, we will call the October tenth meeting of the Caroline County Board of Supervisors to order. But the record states that all board members are here. Mr. Forehand on my far right, representing the Madison District. Mr. Jeff Black, representing Western Carolina. Mr. Sealy, representing Bowling Green. Mrs. Long, representing Port Royal. Mr. Underwood, representing Reed Church. And I'm Floyd Thomas, representing the Manapanae. At this point, Mr. Black, I didn't ask ahead of time, would you lead us in a moment of prayer?
Sure.
Followed by the pledge. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, as we come here before, as we come before you tonight, we ask for your blessings. We ask for your wisdom, and we ask that you look over what's happening in the world, and that somehow problems can be solved peacefully and without war. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it is sent, a one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, we will start with opening board comments. Starting my far right, Mr. Forehand.
None tonight, sir.
Mr. Black?
I'll take up his time. So first of all, I do want to, we have it on our agenda a little bit later on, but I do want to congratulate Beth Curran, so for all your years of service. Anytime that I needed information or something from you, I always got it. So I know you put a lot of years into this county, so that's really a big thing, and I think your office will be in good hands, too. So, thank you very much. Secondly, we got an email last week from a constituent, and it was not in my district, but it was, I thought it was very poignant, and I think all of you got it, from a gentleman who was just talking about data centers in general, and just talking about the decisions that we have to make. And I thought it was just well-written, because whether, we're going to have different opinions up here on data centers, or solar, or everything else, and he basically said, you know, I couldn't do your job, it's very, very difficult, and whatever decision you make. So he was very open about that, and I think we did all get that. So that email was very appreciated. On another note, I received an email that was not so good from a constituent. And I, I do want to point out to people, I know people get very, very passionate and about certain subjects. However, freedom of speech does have limits. And you do have freedom of speech, but you do not have the right to threaten anyone here, whether it be vague, or whatever, that is not, that is not something that is impure and unprincipled speech. So just kind of keep that in mind, you have every right to disagree with us, but you don't have a right to with vague threats. The third thing I do want to discuss is, at the last board meeting, very end, in closing board comments, there was this very odd statement that was made by a supervisor up here about certain supervisors being faked or amending agendas. I've amended agendas in the past, I have no problem with an agenda being amended. My problem is, is that we have a major topic, where something that is really, really, really big, public's going to want to know about. That is really probably not the time to amend the agenda, when the public has no idea that it's going to be put back on an agenda. That's what I said, and that's where I stand. People can call me fake, or whatever, I have no problem amending agendas. I just, let me just clarify, when we amend an agenda, it's something that's really, really, really important, the public should be aware of that amended agenda. As a matter of fact, I think a couple of months ago, we had a work session where we had some items on an agenda. I think Mr. Sealy had brought up the point that probably wasn't the best time to bring these up at a work session, and we decided that probably was the best idea, and we took those off that work session agenda. So there isn't a case where, hey, we decide as a board, maybe probably not the best time to be discussing these, let's do it where it's more public. So, and finally, Mr. Chairman, at some point, I do know that B-Dot is mowing today, at some point, if we can have on agenda a schedule of basically what the county's going to mow, and what the, what B-Dot's going to mow, what we're going to make responsible for, I know we've talked about it before, but I think we need some clarity to that. I will be honest with you, I just, we have Ladysmith Road being widened right now, and starting to come together, and we can kind of see the end results, and then you have off to the side, you just have grass that's, you know, two feet tall, and it's just kind of going into the section, there's a new road, the sides have already looked unkept. And I just don't think that's, sends a good statement to, welcome to, welcome to Caroline, we don't, we don't mow grass. So, anyway, that's my comments, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I've got a few comments, and I'll be a few minutes this evening. First, I'd like to lead with the passing of Spencer Allen, for those that didn't know Spencer Allen. He was on town council for thirty-six years, and served many of those years as vice mayor. He was a true community servant, he did many things for many folks. He actually took care of a few folks independently at the nursing home, brought them things, took care of their checkbooks, made sure they had things they needed. He will be very, very missed in the community, and it's just very sad that a vibrant eighty-four year old man is just no longer here with us today. I can't say enough condolences to his family. On another note, I want to address my comments to the permanent record, the people on Jericho Road, and to the public at large. These comments will also be joined on my website, under past editorials, where I have past newspaper articles, when we had a consistently covering newspaper in Caroline. I have had dozens of phone calls from county citizens since our last several meetings with questions about board procedure, and revisiting and revoting, and even more questions since the three hundred ninety-seven FOIA documents were released last week. As everyone knows, these revisits happened twice in thirty days, in a thirty-day period in concerned projects represented by the same attorney. Furthermore, I now see a return of the Haymont development, as I predicted, and those FOIA documents represented again by the same attorney. There was also a new project by the same developer, as Jericho Road, better known as the Valco Project, with the same attorney located behind the truck stop on Carmel Church for two hundred and fifty acres. Since I had no knowledge of any of the supervisor's action regarding these back-to-back votes, I cannot assure anyone it won't continue to happen. To stop this as a tool, the board would have to adjust its bylaws. But I certainly can't tell you, the employment of this is an anomaly, does not usually happen, nor does it happen frequently. This has not happened in the sixteen years as I've been a board supervisor that we've revisited topics of this magnitude. I wanted to extend my profound apology to the residents on Jericho Road, because I know you felt, when you left the meetings in June, confident that unanimous vote against the locating a perk amidst your homes and farms from the planning commission, and a four-to-two vote against doing so from your board of supervisors, that gave you the feeling you were safe, and the issue was closed. For some time now, the county has been working on a project now known as Madamie. This had hundreds of hours invested in it by county staff to develop a perk with minimal impact, including plans for infrastructure that allows the county to recognize the revenue upfront. We have more than enough property options there, and even other by right locations to allow data centers. More than can be built in several lifetimes, in theory. Not that that was the intention, but this would have been a good test case for one in Caroline. I am not naive, did not assume, as has happened in other areas, that developers would come in and think we might rezone for data centers. Whatever a decent, whenever a decent-sized parcel of land was available for sale, you know, they see them and think, oh, we can do a data center there. Data center, data center land speculation is hot right now. A fact I learned from Mrs. Long's husband, who was in real estate. They are, as he said, trying to buy up and rezone land everywhere. I just never thought Caroline would take a bite of this apple. I also thought the FOIA would yield little to nothing. I want the citizens to know, I had no idea what was developed behind the scenes, and how much pressure there was from the developer for a vote change. I had no calls from this developer before the June meeting to support his project. None. After the board meeting in August, this developer began to call my home phone, so it was evident to me that he expected the vote to fail in June, accounting for his silence then. The calls started the day after the August board meeting. Some of this is similar to the experience of the rezoning of from the same, of the same developer's so-called train station in 2013. I voted against that project, not only because of the absence of any train, and zero likelihood in the future, but the absence of water, infrastructure, roads, and other basics that can only provide, can be provided by you, the taxpayer. The train station alone would have cost our taxpayer millions to build, even if there was a train section, or train. As we know, the results of this vote passed four-to-two in favor of readjusting our composite, as we know the result of this vote passed in favor of readjusting our composite in it to drop the money the state pays to schools, which again, you, the taxpayers, pick up. As I predicted in 2013, the property still sits empty, producing no income from the county. Even if some benefactor obtained water, and a business were suddenly to appear there, it would be years, if ever, that the county would break even monetarily wise. I know the chairman has pointed out that it takes three years for the state to see the rezoning, but three years is a short time. We now have many years of supplementing the differences on the train station. Remember, we recognize the assessed value in property tax, not the market value. If you read the FOIA, you can see what the county staff feels about the train station project. The language is colorful, and is best read by some other so inclined, but sufficient it to say, it's not a viable project. However, this level of pressure in 2023, we currently see in the FOIA is different than in 2013. And I cannot explain where we, where we are now given the track record of this developer. The monetary implications are not subjective or personal, they are simply math and affect our budget in the negative. When shown the tenor, and tone, and content of the FOIA emails, I can blame no citizen for thinking the developers and their attorneys are in control of Caroline County. While I was shocked, and I'm not easily shocked, while I had suspected there were major problems with the integrity of our planning department, I had no idea the director was preparing documents upfront for developers, speaking with constituents about the benefits of developers paying for perks, and aligning his personal vision for the county, as if he's an elected official with said developers. I also had no idea our planning director was sending documents to his home via email, via email handle, the profferman. I have been asked why so many other opportunities our board would zero in on Jericho Road. And if we are planning to do all this, all over, all over the county, let me back up. If we are planning, are we planning to do this all over the county, and the answer is, I don't know. I can only say that my focus has been on the Madamie project, because of multiple benefits to produce such an enhanced revenue stream. At every one of my constituent meetings, I explain that business is the engine that keeps our taxes low. And I assume, since the county has put so much effort, thought, and planning into Mad, into the Madamie area, that our focus lay there. I understand now that folks are angry and distrustful of any data center, which is a huge shame, but cannot blame anyone. The trust factor for our county is down the drain. The motion written by the Valco attorney in the FOIA essentially calls on our taxpayers to pick up the tab for water and sewer on Jericho Road, reminiscent of the train station, which for me is a non-starter. That the motion includes passing Jericho for the health of the citizens of the county is a supreme irony, I cannot even begin to address. I cannot vote to approve a rezoning and comp plan change every time a developer finds a good deal on land in Caroline. I have been asked if, I have been asked if anything that has transpired is illegal. I am not an attorney, and I do not know the answer, but I do know that this has been a big three-ring circus since summer, and it is not a good thing. It doesn't bless our county. I think the low point for me before the FOIA were the pictures of the Belmont developer running after Supervisor Long when she took a break at the August meeting. Those were texted everywhere on social media. The other low point was reading the comfort level, apparent when the developer's attorney instructed our administrator, or suggested our economic development director should change his statements about their project, to ease their clients' concern about its passage. People are paying attention, and the look is not flattering. This is very disheartening for me, since the six tenants of my mission statement on my website include transparency to citizens, as well as smart, compatible business, with the operative word being compatible. In the past, the county had a huge perception problem, which ran concurrently with the supervisor buddy system for rezoning and for monetary insolvency. I have watched the county come back from these perceptions to be the envy of the region as far as business interest is concerned, and have a healthy fund balance. It appears we have accomplished. That is my statement on the last couple of months. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I understand that emotions at times run high, but our board meetings, board meeting rules do not allow for applause, booing, or any statements like that. You can please refrain from doing that again. I would most appreciate it. Thank you. Good luck.
I have a couple of things. One of them is school board, we were meeting with this earlier, we have forgotten meeting in the form of two, or netty, which is on the official school board. The board, the work session. As far as the comment of the attorney after the event, I only went, she asked this material, she said, why? And I said, it's just needed to make sure something comfortable with this. Yeah. We've done, I will share, it is important, that is part of my job. Next month, I'm going to be on campus, so I'm a research, my decision, maybe it's a little bit difficult. But that, I first, the representative, since it's grown. Five years, yeah, sometimes, I will be, it's down. So, I hope I get to be true. Thank you.
First, sorry to hear about. I traveled with my basketball team for almost ten years, and I can go with this to his family. My second comment is regarding the state fair, I think it was a success, I talked to Mr. Joel, I think that they had more than they anticipated, business Saturday, active everywhere, but said it was quite successful. Now to the next. The purpose of economic development departments to go out and bring businesses into the county. When the developer or company looks to come into the county, they don't call the board of supervisors, they call Mr. Wilson. And Mr. Wilson sometimes will call and say, do you want to meet with X, Y, or C about a project they want to bring into the county? That's his job, because we have instructed him to do so. Doesn't mean we agree or disagree, but that's his job to go out and see companies coming to the county. The attorney that we're talking about, I know she used to be our attorney. She wanted to have Jericho Road, we talked about changing proffer, she wanted it to look, to change for one element, and I told her, I would not make that. She said, can I send you a motion? I said, okay, I said, yes, sure, send it to me. But the motion that she sent to me only included one person's property. That motion was never made, because I had other constituents in the Jericho Road area who had called me specifically to say they wanted their property included in the comprehensive plan. So that motion was never made. I wanted the complete comprehensive plan to be reviewed for Jericho Road, so that's how that came about. Thirdly, spy's lives. I think I could say what you want, you could disagree. The Dawn School Building was given to the Dawn Progressive Association in nineteen eighty-three. It was a functioning building that held a police substation, a library, a doctor's office, meeting. Building went down to the point that this board allowed us to have a architect go in and see if that building could be salvaged. It could not be salvaged. We paid this board, the county, you, the taxpayers, paid to have that building looked at. I met with the Dawn Progressive Association on numerous occasions. We used to vote there, this board paid your tax dollars to fix the roof of the building so we could continue to vote there until it was labeled as uninhabited. We met with the Dawn Progressive Association, Mr. Colley had staff, we even had drawing, I took to Dawn Progressive Association. I said, let's put this on a five-year plan to redo a building here for our seat. The community said. There were numerous meetings, where people give her a lie, and said that there were no meetings that the company, or I, tore down. That's a bald-faced lie. That didn't happen. This board saw the plan. It's a phase one, to take down the building, because it had been condemned. The only way we could take the building down is for the Dawn Progressive Association, who owned the building, give it back to the county, because he couldn't spend county money on demolishing the building. That was told me by Mr. Colley, and our attorney. The Dawn Progressive Association gave the building back to the county, we took it down with anticipation, of putting up a pavilion, playground, and finally, phase three, because a new building. There were numerous meetings. The second lie that was told last week was from members of my district who said that we didn't take any readings regarding the noise at the state fair. Mr. Whiteman and I were day and night, going to sound checks, going to different events. Matter of fact, some of the board members have gone to the events, and we were there checking for sound, twenty-five or thirty, to be exact. But to come up here and lie and say, nothing was done, I have sit in some of your living rooms, and we've done sound check. You don't lie, just say disagree, still concerned about the noise level. I can accept that. But as I said before, the state fair isn't going to, state fair does a lot of good for the county. And finally, Facebook, I don't have Facebook, but I've heard all the madness. And I'm sorry that people get on their head to me, you fools. Talk about me all you want, I expect, I'm not going to agree with everything you agree with. I welcome your freedom of speech. But those who are saying that if you lay down a dollar, you get two weeks, I see some of us itching. I see it. My phone number is on the county website, like you get on Facebook, you can get on phone, call, send an email. I don't tolerate foolishness, say I'm whatever, I don't tolerate. Say what you want, do what you will, I appreciate my name. My name means a lot to me in Caroline County. I would not have anyone who out would destroy my name over lives. Those are my comments.
I have a couple to start, but I've got a few more now. Those of you who follow the board on a regular basis will know that our board meetings are conducted under what's called Robert's rule. Robert's rule is order, standard practice for running meetings, and our board bylaws follow them. Under Robert's rule of order, there is something called a motion to reconsider. A motion to reconsider must be made by the prevailing side after.
Bring something up that has passed. What we did, and Mr. Sealy and I debated back and forth of me changing my vote, so I would be on the prevailing side and could bring it back, and he threatened to switch his vote, so it would still be three to three. But that's how things got, got to come back, under the motion to reconsider. The public had already had, had an opportunity to comment during the public hearing, so it wasn't a case where we cut the public out. We were just reconsidering the decision that the board had made, and I think that's important for people to know. We're not trying to sneak anything by. All this pearl-clutching about, I didn't know it was coming, was quite obvious when I was trying to switch my vote, that it would come back again. So we're leaving that at that. I got an email, and my email is on the county website, so I get quite a few unsolicited emails, but I got an email from the University of Mary Washington about a data center discussion that they were going to have from seven to eight PM this Thursday, October thirteenth, at the Jepson Science Center, wherever that is, at Mary Washington. I posted that on Facebook, because there was a lot of discussion about us not getting all the information we had out. That was a random email, had nothing to do with the county, I posted that, so any citizen who wanted to see something about data centers would have that opportunity. Needless to say, some of the comments weren't nice, I'll just leave it at that. The county is going to do a data center project, county staff has worked to do that on October thirtieth, it was originally scheduled for the visitor's center, because it was close to where one of the projects was, that's now, I understand, going to be moved to here, which can accommodate more people, so we will be happy to do that. Mr. Colley is going, going to discuss that as soon as I finish my comments briefly, just to make sure folks know what's going on. And last but not least, I do want to also offer my condolences to Mr. Spencer. my condolences to Mr. Spencer Allen's family. I considered Mr. Allen a friend. He and I worked together a long, long time ago on what was called the Solid Waste Task Force. For those of you who've been in the county for a long time, you'll know that we used to have those green boxes on the side of the road. The county decided to put together a task force to figure out how to get rid of those and come up with the much nicer-looking convenience sites. Mr. Allen, we've often laughed about it together, and I actually saw him cutting his grass. I thought it was last week. It might have been the week before. But Mr. Allen made the motion that made me the chairman of that citizen committee. And I always say that thanks, whenever I saw him, I always said, thanks, Spencer, you got me involved. And he always laughed and said, you deserved it. So I do appreciate it and will always cherish his memory and those things. So that is going to take the end of the board comments.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to talk
Mr. Seeley, you're out of order. We'll come back at another time. I'm going to
Now, I'm talking about the actual meeting for for the data center site because that was also
About that.
When are we going?
Mr. Cully, you're going to talk about it right now?
Because the county fair has offered their facility that's heating and air-conditioned to be there.
Cully is going to talk about that. The staff has put it together. The board supervisor had nothing.
Well, that's, no, no, no. The board supervisors had no input to this, which is wrong.
Mr. Cully, go right ahead. Mr. Seeley, we're going to be civil today.
I'm being civil. I'm saying, okay, no input.
Go ahead, Mr. Cully.
Staff's been working on the data center town hall since it was brought up at a board meeting to try to put one off. So we have the date of October thirtieth. And yes, we originally were going to do it in the visitor center, but we've changed that to this room because it holds more people. It is October thirtieth, six-thirty to eight-thirty. We have six items on the agenda. Number one would be what is the planned innovation and research technology area? Number two, an overview of data center developments? Number three, data centers in the Commonwealth of Virginia? We'll have somebody from BDEP to speak. And number four, data centers and power supply? We have somebody from Dominion Energy and Rappahannock Electric. We'll speak on electric. Number five is county water supply. Mr. Shee will discuss that. And number six, potential economic development impacts. And we're working on somebody for that. We did have a couple of other people we had invited. One was DEQ and then another county, but they were not able to send anybody. It was still plenty short notice, trying to pull that off in just a couple of weeks.
I think there are two people from the Sierra Club that are doing the Mary Washington one. Maybe we could get one of those, just to see if we can. I've got their names. I don't I don't have their numbers, but if somebody has that contact, we can use that. Really, the purpose, I think, is Mr. Seeley in his opening comments that he worked on it all before. Town halls should be citing, why cite, why not cite, things of that nature, just to make sure. Now, if you'd like to ask a question, Mr. Seeley.
I would. Who are the first two speakers?
Leon's going to cover the perk from planning, and Kevin Hughes from STACK Infrastructure is going to cover data center development. They do not have any proposed data centers in the county.
Do you, are you aware that somebody's flying over Jericho Road just previous to this meeting looking for data center sites from the county?
I have no way of knowing that.
Do we? So who would know who from the county and who sent who out there to fly a data center tonight on Jericho Road? Chief Loft is here because the drones are in his capacity.
Gary's doing that. That's to get elevations from the river based on Mr. Black's comments of whether you can see a data center and how many feet. That's staff. That's not for a company.
Are you flying drones, chief?
Yes, sir, at the request of Mr. Wilson.
Okay. Thank you, chief. Mr. Wilson?
Yes, sir.
Explain why the drones are flying over the data center or not over the data center, over the property that's being proposed as a data center.
The drones are flying over so that they can take pictures from the
Can you move the mic some?
There you go.
Okay. Ma'am, that's the only time you get to yell from the outside. I'm going to try to make them speak up so we can all hear. Mr. Wilson, in your outside voice, please.
What we don't have is a lot of information on that site based on some of the concerns that have been raised. So we wanted to get some pictures from what the site looked like from the river to determine if a data center could be seen from the river, which was a sensitive issue. So we've asked the emergency services as a drone to take pictures from the river to see what you can see. And that was the point of it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cully, again, at least from my perspective, and I'm going to ask if any other board member has a perspective, but this is this is a town hall that county staff is putting together without my input, without anybody else's input. But really, the focus would be data center citing because we're probably, I don't want to read the board ahead, but based on the comments, we think data centers are a good thing. It's just where they go to make it a good thing. So you're going to have someone that's going to focus on citing, right? Or can you?
I'll have to think about the specifics of that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Underwood.
That is the major issue that that's before us. It's not a data center. It's the location of data center. So that's what we need to be discussing. What makes it a good site? What makes it a bad site? What are some of the pros? What are the cons? That's, we've gone through this, and this board agrees, all six of us, that we wanted a data center in the northern part of the county. We looked at that, this whole board, for three years. The question that's come up in the last two months is about, is the Jericho Road a site for a data center? And if, in fact, it's amenable to the land? That's the issue. Not not the use of a data center, what it does. There's lies saying that data center produce radiation. Well, I got news for you. You got a small data center in your pockets called a telephone or tablet because it does the same thing. But is that the right place for a data center? That's the question.
So is that what you want to have a town hall on just Jericho Road perk?
No, no, no. Data centers in general, but data centers in general.
Only got two applications, Madam E. and Jericho Road.
But the point, the point of this town hall is to have discussion, pros, cons, of what a data center would mean. And that's, and from experts, where, why, I think to Sierra Club. Mr. Forehand, is there anything in particular you'd like to put in?
Nope, just the pros and cons to make sure everybody's aware of each. That's, that was my intent on suggesting it in the first place.
Mr. Black?
I guess two things that I've got. I kind of was thinking that we were focusing on the Jericho Road project because that's the one that has all the controversy, not necessarily the one up north. And then the second thing is, I don't know when the project that we have in the northern part of the county is coming for a vote. But I, I thought that was kind of coming to a vote for us pretty quickly, the one that we're splitting with Spotsylvania. And if that is the case, I would want to make sure that we don't have a vote on any, if the, if the project is about data centers in general, and then we have to vote on a data center before we have the town hall meeting, that's not going to look good. I, I think that we should focus on, if we're going to focus on, if we're going to focus on data centers in general, there should be no vote at all whatsoever before that October thirtieth. And B, if we're voting on just, if we're concentrating on just Jericho Road, then, then we could have it, the vote could be
Yeah, I think
Because the reality behind it is if you go vote on data centers, and I mean, I haven't seen a lot that I'm opposed to on the, on the, the one in the northern part of the county. But if you just have one in general about data centers, and we've already voted on it, it doesn't, it doesn't look good.
No, the focus, again, the focus is data center citing, pros and cons, what kind of issues would come up in that sense. I think
So we would have no decision on any data center before?
We would. We have a, we have a project that is behind, as we've talked about before in somebody's board comments, when we took things off of the agenda, that was the first reading, and that has put us behind in this project.
Right. So then shouldn't, shouldn't it just concentrate on Jericho Road then?
It should concentrate on citing. It could concentrate on Jericho Road, but more citing. A, to give general information to the public of what data centers are. Then B, to focus on citing, is it a good site? Is it a bad site? We've all agreed, all six of us as the representatives for the entire county, that the one we're doing with Spotsylvania is a good site. Chairman. I'm trying to end this.
Right, I am, but let me add on comment. When we talk to Mr. Wilson about data centers, there are more sites in the county other than the two that we've looked at. One, we agree is, it's a good site. The other site, we agree that's, but there are going to be additional questions and people looking at. So they need to know about the citing more so.
We can't talk specifics. We have NDAs with people.
Right, I know.
There's no sites that can be talked about other than Jericho Road and Madam E.
Right. And I'm trying to stay away from the NDA. That's what I'm trying not to get involved in. But we know that sooner or later, something's going to come, even though people think we can just talk about anything, which we can't. But we know that they're going to come. And that's why I said the citing question is the question.
Right.
And if we can get around having to delay the northern project, I think we can do that and then come back and discuss the Jericho Road site. And that would be the only site that we could discuss.
That's my comment, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I think that's where we are. So if you can focus on that, Mr. Cully, because as the board is aware, we're going to have a joint meeting with the Planning Commission on October twenty-fourth to look at a rezoning for the one we're sharing with Spotsylvania. So we will have a vote in order to not lose that project on the twenty-fourth of October. On the thirtieth, when you have the town hall, you can talk about general data centers and specific citing questions and issues. Okay? Thank you, sir. We're going to move on. I'm going to take a deep breath. Benjamin, can somebody raise Benjamin up so we could see something happy? Okay. That is Benjamin. Benjamin is on my website without, you know, permission from his mother, but he, he didn't smile while I was smiling. But we're going to see if we can get him up here and smile again. Our next order of business is recognition of the treasurer, Beth Curran, upon her retirement. Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any amendments to the agenda? No amendments to the agenda. The agenda will, will stand as stated. Mr. Underwood wants to make a motion to approve it as stated. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Mrs. Curran, if you would come forward. Benjamin for over three decades. And announced three, now therefore be it resolved that the County Board of Supervisors here commands and extends its deep appreciation to Elizabeth B. Curran
I'm for thirty-one plus years, and I look forward to, to the retirement with the grandkids and spending some time. But I'm not going too far. And so I'll be probably, you know, check popping my head in to check on things because, you know, that I don't live too far away. So, but I am looking forward to taking some time off and, and doing some things. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you again. Family, if you'd like to come up? And Mrs. Curran used to do family night at Roma's
Yeah.
Years ago.
Years ago.
I invited myself, and then all of a sudden, they stopped doing that. Come on up here. I think, well, we're not having a technical problem with the feed. All right, again, thank you, Mrs. Curran and family. We appreciate your years of service. We'll move to appointments. Social Services Advisory Committee, Western Carolina. That's Mr. Black.
I do have one. I would like to appoint Andrew Hoyt.
Andrew Hoyt?
Yep.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Black, seconded by Mr. Forehand. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Healthy Generations, I think, Mr. Underwood, you said you were looking for someone? No problem. Okay, Planning Commission, Mr. Forehand.
I'm going to have to postpone this to the next meeting.
No problem. Building Code, Board of Appeals, Madison, Reedy Church, and Bowling Green. Madison, Mr. Forehand?
I thought my
Your person cannot serve.
They cannot because they're now a county employee. So I gotta, I gotta find that person.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. You got somebody for the appointment, and now they can't serve. Reedy Church, Mr. Underwood, do you have one? Okay, Mr. Seeley?
I was not aware I had this appointment. Is the person serving still capable of serving or interested in serving? All right, thank you.
I didn't see it on here if they were. All righty, Economic Development Authority at large, I believe. Mr. Atkins is trying to retire. So we'll need to have a little discussion or thought about at-large person for E D A. Mr. Wilson is running up to make an appointment or to give us someone.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Atkins is retiring, but from his day job, he has more time now to spend with the E D A. He would like to stay on.
Wow.
Would you like a motion?
Please, please.
Mr. Chair, I nominate Mr. Atkins as our at-large economic Mr. Chair, I nominate Mr. Atkins as our at-large Economic Development Authority member.
Second. Okay, motion made by Mrs. Long, seconded by Mr. Underwood. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed nay. That motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Transportation Committee. Uh, this is where we talked about having members of the Board of Supervisors, citizens, to talk about transportation. I have one person who's actually not in my district who volunteered, um, Ms. Linda Arnold. I don't see her today, but she wanted to volunteer, so if we could add her to the list.
I actually have a volunteer from my district.
Alrighty, um. Oh, okay. This is staff put together two citizens that do not reside in the same district as the Board of Supervisors or Planning Commis-, uh, Representatives. So do you have somebody somewhere else?
No, it's in mine and that'd be fine. It's David Beal.
He's in your district though. They're saying not, not in your district. Oh, as a Board of Supervisor member, okay. Um, that's fine. Right. We have not, or Planning Commission members. That's fine. Mr. Beal, you'd like to nominate?
Yes.
Is there a super, is there a supervisor? I'm going to just do them all in one shot. Is there a supervisor who'd like to volunteer?
I would actually like to participate in that, which would impact Ms. Arnold.
Yeah, let's, let's look at having people on. You want to participate or be on it? Is the difference?
I, I'd like to be on that committee.
Okay. Any other supervisor like to be on the committee? Mr. Chairman, I'd like to be on that committee. Alright.
Is this going to be a temporary?
No, I think we'll, it'll be, um, it'll be like most, we'll, we'll do it for a year or so.
I think we need to clarify all those, um, regulations.
Mr. Hughes, do you have, at this time, have any Planning Commission members who are willing to serve?
Do not at this time, no.
Okay. Nor have we gotten a school board representative. I don't know if we've asked or not, but, okay.
And I would have a question if, I mean, as we said today, their concentration needs to be on the, on this education. Um, if they feel they'd like a school board employee, then I would suggest somebody with the transportation or the, um, that deals with transportation directly and not a teacher.
I, I think, yeah, I think you're right and, and at this point, it's probably so hard to get people to volunteer. We'll, we'll, we'll have Mrs. Arnold and, and Mr. Forehand together and, and I'll, I'll just put together a a motion to appoint Linda Arnold, Clay Forehand, Reggie Underwood and David Beal to the Transportation Committee if we could and ask for a second. Or not.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, then I'll let Mr. Black make the motion and Mr. Forehand make the second. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The motion carries unanimously and I will ask the board to look at this again at our next meeting. Uh, and then try to get started as soon as possible. If we get more citizens, fine. If we get, we can't have another supervisor, but if we get more citizens, that's great. And Mr. Hughes will get us Planning Commission members. Alrighty, um, at this time, we've gotten to the consent agenda. Is there anything the board members would like to have pulled from the consent agenda? Motion to approve, uh, motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? I do want to make, uh, Chief Loftus is here. Alright, Mr. Mr. Forehand makes a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'm going to take a liberty, Mr. For-, uh, Mr. Underwood made the motion. Y'all look so much alike. And, and Mr. Underwood made the motion. I'm going to take a statement about it so we can all say that.
Because I did have a question, actually.
All those, uh, a question on F?
No, it was a question on, never mind, it's later on. F is fine.
All those in favor, um, did I get a second?
Seconds.
Thank you. Now I got Underwood and Forehand made the motion, made the second to approve the consent agenda, uh, A through E, G and H. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. The motion carries unanimously. Chief Loftus, you've come to the podium once before. Would you come to the podium, please, again? And I don't have the resolution in front of me, so I'm sorry. Agenda item F, we are, of course, going to approve. But I wanted you to come here in front of all the people that are here and all the people watching. So we could say what a great job you've been doing as the, as the fire chief and what a great job we're getting as fire and rescue. Um, we are going to declare this week, October 8th through October 14th as Fire Prevention Week in Caroline. Um, so we hope people don't see you professionally, but we wanted to see you here and personally, I wanted to say thank you for a job well done.
Alright, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So we're now going to approve it, uh, agenda item F. I'm going to make a motion to approve it myself, so we need a second.
Second.
Alright, seconded by Mrs. Long and Mr. Underwood. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. That motion carries unanimously. We have seven thirty public comments. And we have two public hearings shortly thereafter. So we will, uh, do we have time for closed meeting? Okay, Mr. Sealy, we'll do the closed meeting while we're taking a break.
Mr. Chairman, I move that this board convene in closed meeting pursuant to the consultation with legal counsel and contracts exemption under two point two dash three seven one one dot A dot eight and eight twenty-nine of the Code of Virginia for consultation with the county attorney in discussion with staff regarding performance agreement related to an economic development project in the Port Royal District where discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the county.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Sealy, seconded by Mrs. Long. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Motion carries unanimously. We will be in closed meeting and hopefully be back close to seven thirty to begin public comments. Alright, we will reconvene the October tenth board meeting. At this time, we will do public comments. Oh, we ought to come out of closed meeting first.
Come out of closed meeting.
Mr. Sealy, you got the closed meeting, uh, motion?
I move that Caroline Board of Supervisors certifies that to the best of each board member's powers, only public business matters lawfully exempt from the open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting to which this certification applies and only such business matters that are identified in the motion convening in closed meeting were heard, discussed or considered by the board.
Is there a second to Mr. Sealy's motion?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Sealy, seconded by Mr. Underwood to come out of the closed meeting. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Forehand, do you certify that only those things discussed in the closed meeting were part of the closed meeting motion?
I so certify.
Mr. Black?
I so certify.
Mr. Sealy?
I so certify.
Mrs. Long?
I so certify.
Mr. Underwood?
I so certify.
And I as well certify. Now we're at public comments. Public comment section is, uh, part of the agenda that the board, uh, uses to get citizen input. It is not part of the public hearing. We have two public hearings today. If you'd like to speak regarding the public hearings, uh, you would have to wait for that time. The two public hearings are the transient occupancy tax and the proposed text amendment for the planned innovation research and technology park, what's been referred to as PERC. So if you'd like to speak on those two, please wait. Uh, at this time, I will open the public comment section opened. And we are going to be as polite to each other as possible, so the public comment section will be declared open.
Good evening, members of the board. Uh, Kevin Collins, write-in candidate for the Reedy Church District. Good evening, members. Tonight I stand before you to discuss a matter of paramount concern for our beloved Caroline County. This issue centers around transparency, accountability and the very essence of our democratic values. Specifically, I'd like to address the recent Freedom of Information request filed just last month. This request aimed to dispel the perception that influential attorneys were unduly shaping Caroline County's affairs. Sadly, the information revealed through, revealed through this request has not alleviated our concerns. It has, in fact, heightened them. Freedom of Information Act is a cornerstone of government transparency, enabling citizens like us to access information about our local government's inner workings. The request made with the noble goal of fostering transparency, yet the information brought to light a deeply troubling pattern. What we uncovered is a consistent pattern where attorneys and developers, some of whom are intimately familiar with Caroline County's intricacies, have wielded undue influence over our elected officials and county administration. These attorneys have authored documents and presented them to specific members of our board and county administration whom seem overly accommodating to their interests and those of the developers and landowners they represent. It has become evident that these developers and attorneys do not have Caroline County's best interests at heart. What's even more disconcerting is that some of our officials not only tolerate this behavior, but actively engage with these attorneys without legal representation on behalf of Caroline County. Decisions appear to be made without consulting the attorney, whose role is to provide legal guidance to safeguard our county's interest. At no point should a private attorney be asking our planning director if he thinks the county attorney should be involved. That's up to the attorney to decide. Furthermore, we have discovered that some of these email exchanges have occurred through private email addresses, some of which raise questions about their origins. Why are county officials conducting county business using their personal email? What is being communicated through these private channels? We must know. In the interest of transparency and the well-being of Caroline County, I respectfully request that all matters related to projects involving these entities be suspended until a comprehensive investigation can be conducted into these grave concerns. We must pause and allocate the necess- necessary time to fully comprehend the extent of these unethical practices. It is our responsibility to ensure that our government consistently acts in the best interests of its residents, free from any undue influence or questionable dealings. Caroline County deserves a government that upholds accountability, transparency and remains free from the shadow of powerful interests. Let us unite in our efforts to uphold these principles of democracy, ensuring that our county continues to be a place where the voice
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak as part of public comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Would you just state your name and your voting district when you have a chance?
Teresa Satterwhite from the Western Caroline. My question is to the Board of Supervisors. I've talked to a lot of people in Caroline and no one seems to know what's going on with the data center. I don't know why this communication is not getting through, but it's not. People can't come to these meetings. A lot of people don't have a way to come, but does that mean that they should not be informed? I didn't receive any information on this from my supervisor and a lot of other people. They just say I've never, I didn't know that was going on. I don't think it's because they don't care. I think they're just not being told enough by the Board of Supervisors. Each individual, we used to have small meetings and everybody would go to those because they were close to wherever they were located and they could discuss it, but that doesn't happen anymore. That's gone by the wayside. Um, I think the public needs, Caroline County public needs more information on these important issues. The matter pertaining to the data center must be discussed much further so that all the people of Caroline County know and fully understand what's going on. I don't think this is happening. Um, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding, uh, public comments?
Good evening, Mr. Thomas Ford.
Good evening.
Uh, my name's Karen Lambert, Reedy Church District. Um, a couple of things, um, wasn't really planning on speaking tonight, but, um, I, I understand the state fair is there. I am not that dense that I think it will leave. Uh, didn't want it here, but it's here. Trying to make the best of it. Uh, the weekend was absolutely horrible. Again, traffic, uh, took me an hour and a half to get home from Ashland going the quickest way. They were having to reroute traffic up to Carmel Church and down Signboard. Traffic was just stopped at on fifty-four and three oh one. Um, not, not fun. And the past couple of times I've talked about the cell service, this time I actually could not even have any cell service. I could not text as well as could not make phone calls or use any, uh, you know, hotspot thing, which is I couldn't get out my driveway. I couldn't have called for help. I couldn't have texted for help. And that went for my neighbor also, who happens to have a business, uh, booster on the outside of her home. She had no cell service either. So I don't understand why we don't make the fair have supplemental cell towers because they exist and I know the other state fair used to use them all the time. Then also, um, about the concerts, um, it was, it was better this year thanks to the, uh, Sheriff's Department. But as far as, uh, being told that some of us lied, uh, we did contact our supervisor and a number of us got no response. We asked the county to supply us with the data from last year that Kevin and, and Reggie gathered. It was gathered usually early during the concert. We asked for the written numbers and we were told they did not exist. So I don't know what they were, but the sheriff office has done a great, great job and responded when we called the sheriff's department. But we don't think we should have to continually wonder and wait of when that's going to happen. That they should be held much stricter as far as, as the numbers. Um, I guess, uh, I guess that's all I have to say right now, so.
Thank you, Ms. Lambert. Is there anyone else who would like to speak as part of public comments? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Board members, how y'all today? Uh, two hats today. First of all, citizen. Uh, don't know a lot about data centers. I haven't seen those.
Mr. Mayor, before you start.
Yes.
I'm going to restart your time, but
Okay.
Just for the record, would you state your name and your voting district?
Yes. Mark Gaines, Bowling Green.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'm used to sitting behind there and, uh, doing the same thing, so I forget out here. You know, uh, data center, I don't have a lot of information. I don't, don't know a lot about. Uh, I don't know, something that, you know, education on these things might work a little bit better, especially for me. Uh, I had a little bit talked with, uh, one gentleman, something about, uh, fiber optic lines and stuff, you know, and but still, I just don't understand it. Uh, data centers in the county is a probably good thing, generates money, like you say, because it's a business, you get the tax revenues off of it. Uh, but it needs to be in certain areas that, that, that fit it, you know? And what those area, areas are, I really don't know. Uh, but being out in the rural area, back roads and, and destroying farmlands and, you know, riversides and stuff, I don't think it's there. You know, we have ninety-five great, uh, access to the roads. Uh, you know, to me, that's, you know, you know, my decision on those. Now I put my other hat on. Uh, Mark Gaines, Mayor of Bowling Green. Uh, I'd just like to thank you. I don't know if all y'all are aware of it, but we had, uh, issues down at the sewer plant where we but we had issues down at the sewer plant where we lost our superintendents. I had an emergency MOU drawn up, and it was accepted, and we signed it. And y'all are now temporarily running our water and sewer plants. And I really appreciate it. The expertise from Joey and his people is really showing good. The problems that we've got, that we have with the plant, has been brought forward. DEQ has been involved with it. They're satisfied with what is going on. And I know y'all hopefully have an MOU coming towards you in front of you next board meeting to where we can all look at y'all taking it over permanently and then sending it to the council and getting them to vote on it. But I think it's great. It's really working good. And I commend your team, and you should too as well. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Tammy Gaines, Council, ex-council, Bowling Green. Citizens of Bowling Green. I want to start with just saying I'm appalled and shocked at the information that was let out tonight about the emails, the private email accounts. And that's all I'm going to say about that. I'd like to address Mr. Wilson Gary. He was very supportive of me when COVID came around. He's a big advocate for the county. I feel in all my confidence that he will do the right thing for this county. I feel that Mr. Wilson has done a tremendous job in supporting this county and doing what's right for the county and its people. And I have all my confidence in him. I'm a little disturbed about this issue being voted down twice and coming up again for another vote. I totally don't understand that. I've been on that side, and I'm standing on this side tonight. With just a little bit of information about these data centers that I've been able to research in the last few weeks, I find out the United States has 5,375. We have 4 million people. Germany falls right under us. They only have 522 data centers, but they have 83 million people. India, the most populated country, 1.4 billion people. Data centers, 151. China, 1.4 billion people. They have 448 data centers. Again, to reiterate, the United States has 5,375. Majority of those are in Northern Virginia. We don't want them south. This is a rural county. We want it to stay rural with our rural preservation. They only employ 5 to 30 people at data centers. You want to send all our manufacturing jobs overseas. That's where all our people have jobs. Data centers, again, only employ 5 to 30 people. Please consider the people of Caroline County. Please consider our farmland. Consider our farmers. Think about Maxie Broaddus and what he did for this county. Save our farms.
Thank you, Ms. Gaines. Anyone else want to speak as part of public comment?
Good evening. My name is Gerald Castlebury. And one of the points I'd just like to bring up is that I was greatly disappointed recently when the Tiny Homes project was shot down. And I understand that revenue was one issue that was shot down, and the tiny homes would have provided homes and jobs for a lot of homeless people right here in this county that is greatly needed. And I also hear the cry that we need more revenue for our schools. For the past 20 years, I hear that every year from every politician under the sun. We need more money for our schools. More money will not help our schools. Greater leadership and morality, once again, instilled in our schools will increase the schools, not revenue. And with all that being said, I would just encourage each one of you to look back at your decisions as you make. Don't let revenue be the criteria that you make your decisions. Look at to the quality of life for your citizens. Look at to the people that are hurting in this county and what we can do for them. Don't look for revenue as the baseline, everything you make your decisions based on. Look a little bit deeper at that. Look at the heart and soul of your citizens. And for that, I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Castlebury. Mr. Castlebury, before you go, what district are you in? Voting district or...
I understood it to be, if it's applicable, but I'm not of a voting district. I'm the Religious District of Carmel Baptist Church.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
If that makes sense.
That's fine.
Hi. Am I able to speak on behalf of someone else and myself?
No, ma'am.
No.
Just yourself?
Just myself? I cannot read a letter from someone that was not able to attend today?
Either or.
Okay. This is for Stephanie West I am reading for.
And you are? And you are?
I am Crystal Teets.
And what voting district are you in?
I'm in Hanover County.
Okay.
A lifelong resident to the area.
Okay, thank you. We just need that for the record, and I'll start you all.
Okay.
And the person you're reading the letter from is?
Stephanie West.
From Hanover County also?
Caroline.
Okay.
I'd like to express our strong opposition to the proposed comprehensive plan amendments for zoning of the Mount Airy land from rural preservation. My name is Stephanie West. I was born and raised in Caroline County, and I'm writing on behalf of my parents, who own 44 acres along the North Anna River off Hewlett Road and have resided there for the last 40 years. I'm also writing on behalf of our neighbor, Tim Middlebrook, who owns 113 acres adjacent to the proposed data center site. He's an interested party whose family has resided on this land for almost 200 years. Both parties will be significantly and irreparably impacted by the proposed project. Non-resident land speculators, specifically Mr. Lit Thompson, are making successful strides to mold the comprehensive plan to serve their own agenda. I recently came across a video where the attorney, who represents both Mr. Thompson and the data center developer, spoke to an audience of supervisors about land use regulations. Her law firm defines spot zoning as a zoning decision that's not in support of the overall comprehensive plan and something that is done for a particular landowner and against the interests of the citizens in the community. Clearly, a distinction without a difference. Revisions to the comprehensive plan should be guided by authentic community input on a level playing field, free from manipulation of land speculators and developers attempting to skirt around accusations of spot zoning. Mr. Thompson's highly speculative Washington DC South and the resulting land grab is being used as the carrot to solicit data center developers and others, mega corporations. I have no doubt that his zoning approval would have sunk from its inception had the community known of the eventual plans to cannibalize the surrounding rural areas, burden our scenic waterways, and ultimately displace our historically black communities along Jericho Road who have resided there for generations. In this pitch to attract data center hyperscalers, he boasts the surrounding pristine virgin land with seven miles of river frontage, but in the same breath is soliciting high-impact developers to destroy it. Buzzwords like "sustainable" and "green" are used, yet he clearcuts right up to the riverbank, creates massive amounts of stormwater, considerable light and noise pollution, and encourages high-density sprawl. I implore you to reconsider this impending blight that will permanently change the rural fabric of this area. With respect to the text amendments being addressed today, the maximum 95-foot building height is absurdly out of place, and these buildings will stand significantly higher than our most mature and abundant trees, which are few and far between after aggressive clearcutting on this site. The minimum setback of 130 feet to neighboring properties is the equivalent width of 14 parking spaces. These buildings will tower over neighboring homes and will be highly visible to many residents. The required natural buffer is 40 foot is insignificant.
Thank you very much. Yeah, it was. I'm sorry. Ms. Hodge. One second.
I'm sorry.
The public comment part is just public comments, not related to the public hearings we're going to have later.
I understand.
Of course, if you could be a little more demonstrative next time, I'd appreciate it. Ms. Hodge, go right ahead. Had nothing to do with you.
No problem. Good evening, Chairman Thomas and members of the Caroline Board. My name is Mary Hodge, Bowling Green District. I think one of you was right on point at the September 26 meeting that many here are representing developers and their deep-pocketed lawyers. In fact, it is quite evident that an attorney is actually writing motions on behalf of you. And not only is this person orchestrating county actions on her many clients' behalf, but she is playing our planning director as her first violin as well. I don't know...
Ms. Hodge, Ms. Hodge, address your comments just to me, please.
Okay.
And refrain from references to other people, if you would.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't know, sir, but is it common practice for a developer's attorney to write documents on behalf of county staff regarding master plans for development or writing motions for supervisors to make? Unsurprisingly, there are many questions surrounding the results of the recently released FOIA documents concerning not only some of the Caroline County supervisors' interactions with developers and their claws on the county, but also actions, I wonder, may be inappropriate for our planning director, who appears to be currently developing a bromance with Mr. Lit Thompson as they work on aligning their vision for utopian Carmel Church Station. This is the property that still stands empty today. It is a county supervisor's job to hold a vision reflected by the people who elected them. Planning directors are staff hired to discern projects in an impartial manner. I was quite taken aback several months ago when the director approached myself and some others after a planning commission meeting and wanted to know why we were not in support of data centers. He probably used the massive 6,000-acre S power in Spotsylvania as an example, boasting that developers have big pockets and will give us whatever we ask for for they are so eager to gain approval to advance their motives. In another email, county economic director's correspondent suggests Mr. Thompson's vision of Carmel Church Station as looking like the futuristic Jetsons, but with graffiti-covered coal cars passing through, giving a not-so-flattering opinion by humorously calling this project a boondoggle. This is the property that still stands empty today and was rejected before it was rezoned by transportation officials as a train station. However, it continues to cost the county on a composite index and drain you and I tax dollars as the state noting the value of the past rezoning reduces the amount of money it sends to schools. This is nothing personal, but I hope you realize that we are watching and listening and paying attention. And yes, we are mad as hell.
Thank you, Ms. Hodge. Anyone else who would like to speak as part of public comment? Anyone else who would like to speak as part of public comment? Take your time.
Hi, I'm Ashley Parks. I am in the Reedy Church District on Jericho Road. Sorry, I'm real short. Thank you. On Jericho Road, Reedy Church District. I don't really have a speech. I wrote some stuff down, but I just want to come say, I don't know. Been in Caroline for a few years. We looked around in other counties, and Caroline was what we were looking for. Little land, or a lot of land with a little house. And Caroline was the place, one of the only places that offered it from here all the way up past Stafford. And I feel like maybe you're forgetting that most of the people in this county aren't after a lot of money. We're not after extravagant things or lavish things. If you go out and look out in the parking lot, most people have pretty average cars. We have pretty average houses. We're living a simpler life, and that's what we're after, especially in a time where there are a lot of people that are chasing the money and the revenue and the economic development and all of that. Not that we can't grow, but we're not after that. We're not big city people. We want to be in the country. This is what makes Caroline great and what makes rural preservation so important, especially in a time, you know, if you look the last 10 years across the nation, farmland is steeply declining. And that trend is true in Virginia as well. So our desire to preserve that and keep our farmers employed is real and important to us. And I would hope that we have a board that it's also important to them. And when you're thinking of things to develop or create for this county, that those are those priorities for the citizens, the ones that have elected you and hired you and put you in this job, that that's what you are defending for us and not bending to people that are after the money, want to come buy farmland for cheap, and then sell it to make a lot of money off of it after they've changed zoning and are going to completely ruin the essence of our county and specifically Jericho Road. And it's honestly mind-boggling to me that you... It's ironic, really, because we don't even have internet on Jericho Road, and you're talking about building a data center. Mount Airy and Hewlett don't even have sidelines or center markers, and you're talking about putting seven years of construction traffic on those roads. I travel Hewlett very regularly, sometimes daily, with my children in the car, and I have passed more than one lost 18-wheeler on Hewlett, and it is honestly terrifying because the road is so narrow. So to think about having wide loads or dump trucks or heavy equipment moving up and down those roads for the next however many years, it seems so irresponsible that you would even consider putting it there, especially without any input. And I hear that you have other people that maybe are reaching out to you to say that they want these projects, but have you reached out to any of the other people that live and travel these roads daily to ask what our opinion is? So I'm here to make mine known. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Park? No, I said, "Thank you, Ms. Park."
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Call me back.
Reedy Church. Is there anyone else who would like to speak as part of public comment? Anyone else who would like to speak as part of public comment?
I'm Mark Atkinson. I live in Childsburg. And I just heard, yes, sir.
Western Carolina.
That's the Western Carolina.
Western Carolina. Thank you.
You could restart him and give him his six seconds back.
Give me my whole six seconds. I just heard for the first time tonight that the Board of Supervisors has, in fact, made a final decision and is in agreement that y'all want these data centers. And I just want to say, I personally don't believe in magic wands. I keep seeing local governments, not just in Caroline, but every place I've ever lived, the local governments are always looking for some magic wand to solve all their economic problems. If we just get a sports stadium. If we could bring in a casino. And now the new thing is these data centers. But I think there are a lot of questions about these data centers. And I've told Supervisor Thomas that my mind is not totally made up. I'm open to arguments, but it seems like the Board of Supervisors isn't open to arguments. You've made your decision. You believe this is the way to go, and we're going to do it whether the citizens want it or not. Now Supervisor Thomas very kindly shared this information about the meeting that's going to be from the Sierra Club at Mary Washington University. I'm going to be there. My wife is... I'm gonna be there. My wife is gonna be there. Most of our neighbors are gonna be there. How many supervisors are gonna be there? One? That's all we need to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Is there anyone else who would like to speak as part of public comment? Anyone else would like to speak as part of public comment? Hearing none. Public comment is declared closed. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for your comments and your time and attendance. Our next order of business is the public hearing for the transient occupancy tax. Is Mr. Bassoon here or Mr. Parton's gonna handle that or David's gonna handle that? Mr. Parton, go right ahead. David, I take it is gonna be here to answer questions. The reality is we are matching our ordinance to the state and that's why we're here.
Yes, sir. You summed it up nicely.
Excellent presentation, wasn't it?
That's right.
Thank you, Mr. Parton. Board members have any questions of Mr. Parton or the Commissioner's representative this time? And and basically, again, for those in attendance, the state has changed the way the transient occupancy, that's when you stay in a hotel, there's a tax applied that goes to the county for certain economic development things, tourism and those sort of things. So we're just matching our regulation with the state, which is kind of forced to do that. Any questions of Mr. Parton or Commissioner Revenue's representative? Thank you, sir. Hearing none. The public hearing for the change in chapter one oh three for the transient occupancy tax is now open. Is there anyone who would like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Hearing none. Public hearing is declared closed. How does the board wish to dispose of this issue? Questions, comments, motion?
Make a motion. We approve the change to our tax code, chapter one oh three, to align with the state.
Thank you, Mr. Foran. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made by Mr. Foran, seconded by Mr. Black. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Our next public hearing is the proposed text amendment number ten, twenty twenty-three, which is to create a definition for Planned Innovation Research and Technology Park, PERT. Mr. Hughes.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So at the September twenty-sixth board meeting, this ordinance was presented to you in the first reading. At that hearing, the board expressed concerns regarding setbacks along the rivers, internal setbacks, building heights and impact on sound produced by generators. This revision before you tonight attempts to address comments provided to by the board. The specific amendments that address the noted concerns are the inclusion of a five hundred-foot setback along rivers, the elimination of inclusions for rooftop mechanical equipment to the maximum building height of sixty-five feet, making the maximum height sixty-five feet inclusive of rooftop equipment, and also language that requires generators be muffled. Those specific items are found, the setbacks are on page five G, item G on page five, where there's an inclusion of the language that says, in addition to the RPA and RMA areas, a five hundred-foot setback is required along our rivers. The on page eleven, item G again, height, a maximum building height of sixty-five feet with a bonus of one additional foot for every additional foot of setback up to ninety-five feet. Is there that language was the last time and now the language reads inclusive of spires, bell free, cupolas, antennas, communication towers, water towers, ventilators, chimneys or other appurtenances usually required to be placed above the roof level and not intended for human occupancy. And then the third item on page twelve speaks to the inclusion of generators being enclosed and having mufflers. So any it reads now, any generator within a thousand feet of an existing residential structure, place of worship or school shall be enclosed and muffled for the purpose of mitigating sound. Those were the the major items that the board asked to be included in the document at the last meeting and so they are there now. So I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any additional questions or concerns related to the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hughes. What we have done in the past is we've worked on this first reading several times. You got board input. Now we're having the public hearing. Before I open the public hearing, are there any questions of Mr. Hughes?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Are you the only one?
I will.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Seeling.
Page three, section four, item C. The storage of materials to be used in onsite production and/or products made onsite provided such materials or products are located in a fully enclosed building. Now, we talked about this at the work session because I kept my book on both on from both work sessions on this. My concern still is.
Page three.
Page three, section four, C.
He's trying to find it. Okay. Go ahead.
This is still onsite product creation. My concern is building of lithium battery packs and keeping them there. We we do not inhibit anything to do with building of those kinds of materials. We'd say in another section that they can't store those backup batteries in those facilities that can be kept elsewhere, but we don't talk specifically about because this is an ancillary use and structure.
Would you like to remove that? I mean, it's it's identified as a special use, so if if someone was going to come before the board and was going to have a use that was gonna produce said lithium batteries, an example.
Well, what if they just said they were going to package units? Would you have to know what they're packaging?
Yes, we would.
Well, let's and 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 let's make sure we all understand the process. We're right now creating a definition. There will be rezoning applications that will match up with this definition, but the board during the rezoning application always has the opportunity to restrict or make make more restrictive any of these conditions based on that application, correct?
That is correct. More specifically, let's say someone came in and rezoned fifty acres to the PERT designation and they came back and they said, okay, I have a company or business that wants to do storage of materials used in the onsite production of those products. They would have to apply for a special exception. So there again, that that process requires a public hearing and the special exception allows the board even greater control because the board can then impose specific conditions related to that application. So, Mr. Seeling, your example, if a portion of their business, let's say, was to prepare lithium batteries, then the board could impose a condition that says lithium batteries are not allowed to be produced as a part of this special exception, the application.
Okay.
The other was the onsite, it's J, onsite ancillary utility facilities. We talked about that at length and I thought we were gonna define that a little more because we'd go to the next section five and then we again, we go to the approximate location and dissemination of existing and proposed structures, fencing, property lines and ancillary equipment. We use the word ancillary sort of like it's something.
Right. And and in that definition, the data centers are identified there, so it is specific to data centers. And so when you say ancillary utility facilities, that could be a water treatment facility. It could be potentially the generators. It could be some other piece of equipment that could potentially be on the the property as well. There again, those are identified as special uses and as applications come to the rezoning process, if it's an initial application, those are items that would have to be identified as a part of that application. So if there was there again, if there was some ancillary use that we were going to object to, then we certainly would have the opportunity to object to that use as a part of the rezoning. And if it was gonna come back at a later date, if they wanted to add something, a water treatment facility, a well, a water tower, a potential substation as a utility, then they would have to apply for a special exception. And so it wouldn't be a by right use. And there again, the board would have ultimate control whether or not to approve or deny that request.
And the definition of ancillary is a support activity because ancillary is an adjective.
That is correct.
I only know that because I just Googled it. Okay?
And then again, it's specific to data centers, so it would have to be data center use.
I mean, we say specific to data centers, but we've gotten a number of uses that are that they can actually that are permitted by principal use. So it's not.
By right.
Huh?
It's not by right. They have to apply. We have the ability to to deny all of those. They can ask for the moon, but it's up to us to determine what we agree with and what we don't. We can, we can tighten the belt as tightly as we want. We can even deny it. That's up to us to deny it if we see that it doesn't fit. This is just simply a definition of what this would be. The final decision.
Of what can go in.
What can go in that. That's when we get involved. But the definition just gives us a guideline. That's all.
Okay.
Page eight, B buffers.
Just pass it. Buffer yards?
Buffer yards.
Yeah, go down.
It's up a little bit. At the top of the page, middle of the page.
Up further.
Right now, he's good right there.
Hey, yeah.
You want that one?
Buffer yard shall be provided to visually screen development from a budding residence, residence, residentially zoned or occupied properties, public roads, schools, places of worship, subject to the following standards. We had three hundred feet in there and now that's that blue changes is deleted.
What's it about?
That is correct. So essentially, the deletion of that means if there's any property today that would have to be screened. So rather than place a definitive distance now, if there is a residentially zoned property, occupied residence, school or place of worship, then it has to be screened.
Yeah, but we had a distance before and I thought because it was in blue, we agreed to it.
No, that was a I I honestly believe that three hundred feet was put in there erroneously because this is the more restrictive. Without the three hundred feet, it's more restrictive.
Can we want the move? Yeah, the next one is is giving you forty feet for a buffer setback.
I thought we I and I have in my in in my notes that we'd agreed to three hundred feet. That's the only reason why I brought it up is I matched this up against what I had written.
I think, Mr. Seeling, we did the the one hundred and the two hundred. That's where we got the three hundred feet. It was.
I think that that was.
That was water.
With with the water.
Water. So it wasn't a three hundred feet here.
Right.
I recall.
So.
That was on the that was on the distance from the from the water, I believe.
Right.
I'm just going through the anomaly.
Yeah, that's what I had on.
Do you have a suggestion for a distance? Well, I thought that was our suggestion from the twenty-sixth was three hundred feet.
I know on our solar ordinance it was.
See, and is what is solar considered and and would solar be considered ancillary for for the previous section, ancillary onsite?
Supporting use?
Yeah. So is solar considered ancillary use?
You could they could only use solar if they were going if it was gonna be used directly for that facility. An ancillary use is specific to a.
Okay, so they say they're gonna use it for that site and I just found my note on solar. So I I guess that's the question. Can they put solar on the ground on these sites if they have a big enough area and call that an ancillary use?
It could be their backup.
Well, one of the things that we we understand that these are large sites and we have thought about that a lot. And so one of the things is as a part of the review process, one of the things that we have asked applicants to consider is proffering that out. Now there is not a specific prohibition against solar?
I mean, I know we permitted it on the buildings, but I'm talking about auxiliary on the ground.
Right. No, I understand it.
But I think again, in the process of rezoning, that's something we could proffer out or you know, deny based on the fact that they wanted it.
An applicant could request it certain. They could come in and say, hey, we want to have X amount of areas set aside for solar panels.
So you take a site that's eighteen hundred acres. The facility takes up roughly forty-eight, thirty acres for a total facility. Could they, would it be out of the question to say they want the rest in solar?
I think it'd be out of the question that that wouldn't recommend that or.
Well, we don't, we we don't limit it to just on the buildings, though. That's, I guess, my point.
Well, that's what I'm saying. The point is that the board would say, we're not gonna allow you to put, you know.
But we agree that's an that's an ancillary use.
That could be an ancillary use, certainly.
I would think it would, especially if they said we're using solar, battery backup, whatever as our secondary use. Then it's an ancillary use, right?
It would be, yes.
But but we would also, or the board also has the opportunity to say we don't think you need more than seven panels for, you know, an emergency backup system.
Or identify.
Or whatever that number is.
Identify the specific number of panels that you want to use for.
Yeah.
Backup.
You can't, you can't come in, say you're building something, a research building, and then use the rest of your property for solar panels. You can't do that.
No.
You had a question yet?
So what do you want to do about the three hundred feet?
We've got the ability to restrict that when it comes in rezoning. We could make it, you know, five hundred feet in rezoning.
Well, there ought to be something that reminds us what we want.
But what it does is it gives us the opportunity. We may need five hundred feet. We may need a hundred. We might need a hundred and fifty, but but if we if we only put three hundred and we need five hundred, then we restrict it ourselves. But but now we get the opportunity to make it whatever we decide is appropriate.
I don't disagree, but we're taking it out completely, so there'll be nothing there.
But in our case, less is less allows you to have more flexibility. If it says three hundred, there may be a case where a hundred and fifty works or that's a reason.
But shouldn't there be?
You want a number.
There should be something that says a buffer will be determined by I I'm just saying, just taking it out gets gets rid of it completely.
Rewarding.
You never, right, you never, you never revisit this because it goes away. Five years from now, it goes, yeah, we should have had a number. We should have done something. I'm just saying it should say our occupied properties. There should be a distance to be determined by the type of application.
Bingo.
So I have.
Mr. McKenzie, does that work?
Well, can I, before we go there, can I ask a question?
Okay.
The way it's written, it's more restrictive. So if you
That's what I thought.
If you put in right now, the way it's written, no matter what distance the residential property is, it requires a buffer.
Right.
So if you if you add a three hundred feet in there, then are you that's why I think it was erroneously placed because it's not clear as to is that three hundred feet from the property line? It's just not, it wasn't clear. So in order to make it more restrictive and make it more clear, and I think achieve the goal that the board was looking is looking for is to provide protection to the adjoining properties. is to provide, provide protection to the adjoining properties, then it says here, if you're adjacent to any of these uses, then you have to provide a screen. Regardless of whether it's one foot or one thousand feet, you have to provide additional screen.
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Long has a question. You got one more?
Um, I think I'm done. On, on this same topic, uh, under one, after we go by buffer yards. So if we take out the three hundred, every buffer yard shall provide a visual development from a budding residential zone or occupied properties, public schools, roads, places of worship, subject to the following standards. Within the required setback, an undisturbed buffer shall be provided of forty feet. We could simply reword that, shall be provided at no less than forty feet as determined by the board of supervisors or, or put something in that phrase to determine that we have flexibility and then everybody would be comfortable. Because if it's a, I mean, one of the things in here that's, that's allowed are educational facilities. Well, we don't necessarily need to block a pretty university building all the way around in the front by three hundred feet. Maybe we do, maybe we don't. So can we rewrite it so we, it is very plain to anyone reading this that we have leeway depending on what the building is that is app, that we are, are approving or we are considering. Because it's not just a definition for data centers. It is a definition for research or development facilities, technology facilities, public water sewer utilities, educational facilities, offices for software or engineering architectural development or planning, offices for, um, educational governmental me, uh, development. You know, it, there's, there's lots of things in here. So I think when we go through here, we need to give ourselves enough flexibility to meet all these different projects that could go if they got rezoned into, under this definition. And let's not put blinders on and just look at the, the, you know, the one project, but let's look at all of them. So we need to write it so that it's flexible, however you all think best.
So much along, the, the one thing I would say, this, this, this section, this pert definition is going to be a division in Article eleven of the zoning ordinance, under the conditional uses. So in the, in Article eleven, there is a provision right now that allows the applicant to ask for, or the board to approve alternative standards. So the flexibility is already built into the ordinance. And so if an applicant was to present an application, and let's say it's going in an area that has existing development that is compatible, and there was, they didn't need to have the necessary buffers there. The applicant, as a part of their plan, would show, hey, our facility is going to be whatever it is, one of those permitted uses is going to be adjacent to existing development and it's going to be compatible with that existing development. So we don't feel like we need the necessary forty-foot buffer. So we would ask, as an applicant, we would ask that that, on that particular property boundary, that that buffer not be there. So the, the flexibility that you're looking for and being able to craft applications specifically to their, uh, location or area is there now. So it, that's just in the ordinance right now. In the con, in the section that it's going in.
Even though I don't see it right here, giving a leeway, it's under the subsection.
It, it is there. The applicant has the opportunity to ask for, let's say for some reason, e- every one of these items in this perk district was problematic for some reason. That ordinance allows that applicant to essentially rewrite an entire port, perk ordinance themselves, and that become the controlling document for that particular project. So like I said, you've already built that flexibility into the existing ordinance where this new division will be a component of.
And then we, we have the, the ability to change it and tighten it up and move it around. Thanks, ma'am.
Well, it's not, and, and to clarify, I, I've gone back to the original one that came out of the planning commission. Um, the ones that were at the board of supervisors before it did say three hundred feet, but the one that came out of the planning commission did not have three hundred feet in it. Yeah, it, it had that forty feet, uh, of forty feet, or one and a half was there, but. So you're saying, and, and I think the board is saying, without the three hundred feet, it's more restrictive because we have the option to do it either way. All right, can I, can I do the public hearing now and then we'll have some more questions?
Well, what did we, what are we gonna, what is the definitive answer to this? Because we haven't answered anything. We just agreed that it says three hundred feet. It didn't come in out of the planning commission. We put it in, which I.
We're gonna make that decision once we finish the public hearing. We're gonna go back to that. We've got that question. Buffer yards, and you had another question that, that, that had some issues. Right?
Yeah, the solar panel stuff and how are we gonna delineate that?
Those are two we're gonna go back to. Once we do the public hearing, we're gonna make a final determination on, on, uh, on those if we go forward. Uh, thank you, Mr. Hughes. We'll declare the public hearing for text amendment ten twenty-three to be open. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the text amendment which defines planned innovative research technology parks? Anyone who would like to speak to the text amendment? Is there anyone who would like to speak? Mr. Wright, how are you, sir?
Yes, sir, Chairman Thomas, Board, McRae Jr., Madison District. My concern on this proposed changes to this is you're saying you allow a building of sixty-five feet with possibility up to ninety-five feet. Now, does that mean we need to now get ladder trucks and fire apparatus that can go that high? We ran to this many years back, let's say, from the village. The roads were not big enough to accommodate the fire trucks, so we decided we needed ladder trucks. So they could stay one street off, fight the fire. We spent over a million dollars for two trucks. And to my knowledge, and I could be wrong, we no longer have ladder trucks. They were sold off for junk or excess vehicle, I'm not sure. But that brings to light, are you going to need to provide a fire apparatus that will go that high to fight a fire on the rooftop? If you're gonna have solar panels or whatever you put up there. So that's my question. Ever since. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding the text definition that we're faced with?
Kevin Collins, right in candidate for Reedy Church District. Good evening, Board again. Chairman Thomas.
Good evening, sir.
For a living, I write documents. That's what my job is. All day long, I review and write documents for computer automated software systems validations, uh, for a large pharmaceutical company. I'm not sure why it is taking so long to rewrite a document when concerns are clearly stated at each meeting, yet we continuously are coming back here to talk about this P I R T. There has already been one of these zones dedicated in the county, and we don't have a clearly defined definition. We now wanna create sixteen hundred more acres along Jericho Road. We have no defined definition. I heard this evening that there's being studies done with company, or I'm sorry, county funded drones.
It's just about the text amendment.
It is about the text amendment, sir. This has to do with the height of the buildings.
Jericho Road doesn't have anything to do with the text amendment.
Sir, I'm talking about the P I R T.
But you're talking about Jericho.
Designation of building height. And in reference to that building height, I'm using an example of the drone work that was done off Jericho Road. Our concern is not that I can see a data center from the river. It is the environmental impact. It is the sound impact. It is the property value impact. So when someone tells me that this does not have anything to do with this text amendment, it most certainly does.
Now, your comments would be.
Ninety-five foot tall building.
Comments would be more appropriate during a rezoning at any particular place.
Sir, is the Pert designating sixty-five to ninety-five foot tall buildings?
If you talk about sixty-five to ninety-five, you can.
Okay. They do not belong along any scenic waterway anywhere in this county. I have an email here talking about Pert. How can we be so sure that these organizations and lawyers aren't writing these documents for us? Um, I've got a pre-application here for a data center company interested in Carmel Church. It was discovered under the Freedom of Information Act. They want a two-story building. Why are we pushing for ninety-five story buil- no, I'm sorry, ninety-five foot buildings? Who is pushing that? Is it the interest of the county or is it one of these developers who like to write lots of emails? Um, aligning visions with private property owners, uh, hounding representatives for smaller sized P I R T areas? Again, we have no designation for these areas. Uh, questions keep being brought and here we are to vote on it. I think the residents of Caroline County deserve a little more thought and effort from our planning department into this document that's going to define data centers, their usage and ancillary uses like some of the supervisors have brought up. And, uh, I, I think it needs to go back to the drawing board. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone who would, else who would like to speak regarding the text amendment?
Hello, Mary Hodge, Bowling Green District. Good evening. Given the fact that an outside attorney has written everything else self-servingly for the planning department, one wonders if this amendment should go back to the drawing board to ensure that this language is actually representing our county's safety and best interests. With that in mind, I would like to bring up some questions that I have on this document, which in some areas are still quite vague. Section two, permitted uses. What defines research and development facilities? Could a government or private biotechnology lab operate within this zone? Section three, special uses. Again, would research and testing laboratories be anything that would threaten the health and safety of nearby residents? Also, public utility generation. Does this include ground mounted solar panel installations on the premises? What about a small nuclear reactor? Section four, accessory uses. Campus-wide central, centralized fuel storage or backup energy systems are not permitted. But does this clarify, there will be no underground diesel fuel storage tanks or lithium battery ba- battery banks on the premises? Indoor research and testing facilities. Will residents be informed on the potential dangers of any hazardous substance that could be released from these laboratories? Section five, additional submission requirements. Dwellings, schools, and places of worship within a mere three hundred feet. A former NASA scientist, Dr. John Liver, recently released a comprehensive sound study on data centers in Prince William County. He contends that the noise impact rate, range of a new data center exceeds two to three miles and easily exceeds sixty decibels in the same distance. Now, we all love Caroline for her peace and quiet. However, my next door neighbor this summer ran some sort of generator or power washer almost full time over the course of an entire weekend. And I could not go outside and enjoy my property, nor even es- escape the unceasing noise indoors. Noise can have a horrific and, um, horrible detrimental effect on all forms of life. Section six, setbacks, and section eight H, building height. A maximum building height was set at sixty-five feet. However, this may increase one foot in height for each foot in setback up to ninety-five feet. Section eight N, emergency services training. It was discussed that there should be one of these sky, that should one of these skyscraper type buildings become inflamed. Local firefighters would battle the blaze from within the building. What are the potential dangers of toxic fume emissions to nearby residents if massive amounts of computer equipment, toxic batteries and diesel fuel are burning and smoldering? What will be the evacuation distance proposed? Thank you for working, continuing, continuing to work diligently.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding the text amendment?
Good evening, Crystal Teets here. Um, speaking from just great information online. Caroline County currently has approximately three thousand three hundred and ninety acres of land zoned for industrial uses. Of this acreage, only about eight hundred and fifty-nine acres are actively being used. Why are we taking more of our rural land for Pert? The comp plan years ago, when we had citizens working diligently over the course of a year plus to determine how we wanted the county to use the land. Development should be located in such a manner as to minimize impacts to the county's environmental resources, including but not limited to wetlands, steep slopes, highly erodible and highly permeable soils and aquifer recharge areas. The vision to maintain the desired rural character of the county through open space preservation while providing sufficient designated growth areas to accommodate expected demand for business and residential growth. I bring my kids to Caroline County multiple times a week. This would be such an eyesore and it's heartbreaking to even have you consider it.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding the text amendment? Anyone else who would like to speak regarding the text amendment? Is there anyone else? Hearing none, the text, uh, the public hearing is, the car is closed. Board members discussion, we had discussion on the solar panels and discussion on the buffer yard, uh, distance. How does the board wish to dispose of this matter?
Mr. Hughes.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, yes, I was looking for, uh, Chalk Loftus, he's here.
Okay.
Mr. Black, you have the floor, questions?
Yeah, just have it. Mr. Hughes? Uh, I just want the public to hear this. I think I know the answer myself, but, um, with a perk, let's say, um, you know, for me, I've said before, there's gonna be areas where I think these things are, are gonna be adequate and then there's gonna be areas where I don't think there's, they're adequate. So if the Pert is approved tonight, are we as a board boxed in? So in other words, for example, on like building height or, um, like a resource area, like sensitive to, um, a river, are we boxed in to say, hey, look, um, we need to go more stringent in this area, but we can, we can go less stringent in this area because it's not a resource sensitive area or, um, it's, it's, it's kind of in a place that's near an industrial area. Do we, are we boxed in by the Pert at that point? Or can a special exception, we say, you know, the, the height can, can, needs to come down in this area. Maybe we can afford to go a little bit higher in this area because it's, you know, in one of our industrial areas or near one of our industrial areas. That's my question.
So, no, you're, you're not boxed in. Like I said, you have the opportunity. The Pert ordinance sets the baseline standards and then as being a part of chapter eleven or Article eleven of the code, then there are opportunities to, um, negotiate or require additional standards. So if for some reason a data center or some other you, any use came in and wanted to rezon property adjacent or fairly close to a residential area, or even an industrial use that wanted to be close to a more commercial area, then through that process, we work to mitigate the impacts of those projects. And so because you have a by right use or ordinance standards, does not preclude the board from seeking additional mitigation for those projects.
So I'm, I'm just gonna use, for example, the height, because that's one thing that we've been talking about tonight. So height says sixty-five feet. So I got one area, it's, it's, uh, on a, near a river. I really like that. And so we say, all right, the maximum you can be is sixty-five or it's just something like that. Um, now, we can go to another area, we even with the Pert, and then they're like, hey, maybe in this area we can go higher than sixty-five feet or, you know, the companies, you know, if the company says, well, this is our justification for why it's needed. Um, and we as a board agree that, can we, can we go higher in that area but stay, stay, even go lower? And I guess what I'm saying is the sixty-five feet, can I go higher or lower than that based on my, my area where it's going?
You can, you can.
So this is, so what we're saying tonight, even though people think this is like, these aren't hard and fast rules, is what I'm trying to say. So I got one project in one area. I, I really don't even like the sixty-five feet. I wanna go down to, I wanna go down to, I don't know, just whatever, forty feet, yeah, thirty feet, forty feet, something like that in that area. But in this area, you know, um, we can go up from the sixty-five. So I can go either. So I can go either more or less restrictive based on an area. That's what you're saying. So I guess my second question.
I just want to clarify this.
Mr. McKenzie, the county attorney.
So just to be clear, you know, this is, this is not a, a special, you know, for the data center example, that's a, that's a permitted use under the rezoning. So the rezoning could come in and you can't put conditions on it like you could for a special exception use. They would make proppers. And if those proppers weren't acceptable to you, then you would vote against the application. But you can't demand proppers from an applicant. Now, there's the, the special standards that Mr. Hughes is referencing, but I just want to make clear that, for the record, that, you know, these are rezonings that we're talking about and not special exception applications. And so you can't place conditions on it like you can a special exception application. They're going to apply to rezone to PERT. These are the standards for PERT. If, if you don't think that this is a good location for these standards and they don't offer any of these alternative proposal, then, then you would.
So I'm, but I'm hearing though.
I'm confused, Jeff, and I think you are too.
Yeah, I, I just got, I feel like I just got two different answers because I.
You can, you get my point, yeah.
Actually, I have a potential solution that's going to, that can make us all.
All right, I'll go for that.
And I, I agree a hundred percent with Mr. Black. And I like Mr. Sealy's ideas as, give it some flexibility. This, anything in the PERT, I think, should be our hard and fast stuff. However, the topography of, of parcels.
That's my point.
In this county could be vastly different. I mean, just looking at the three in my head off, you know, one off Drybridge Road, one off Jericho Road, and one off Stonewall Jackson, the topographies are all three different. So my suggestion is let this document be silent or reference that the heights or setbacks will be addressed in the, in the zoning application because I think we've made this harder than what it is for every other piece of development that we've done in the hopes of making it easier in the future. But it's.
That's a good idea.
Let it, let the project fit the topography of, and, and the setbacks of the site by letting it be silent or just reference some general things that must be addressed in the, in the rezoning application, which we're at all. I mean, does that make sense? Is that going to make it easier?
Mr. McKenzie?
It makes sense, but I need to go back and address Mr. Black's confusion because what Mr. McKenzie is saying is correct. And I think the point he was trying to make is through the rezoning process, the board can't at a public hearing impose a condition. The way the process works, though, when applications come along and an applicant shows up for a pre-application meeting and they say, I want to have a sixty-five-foot building. And we say, well, in this particular area, that building is not appropriate, then they would amend that GDP or their proffer statement to say, we're not going to have a sixty-five-foot building. So I don't want you to be confused to think that you don't, we don't have the ability as a county to have flexibility to.
GDP is the general design plan.
Generalized development.
Yeah, okay.
So we don't have, I don't want you to think that we don't have the flexibility to negotiate and massage cases to their applicable situation. So I just wanted to be, I think the distinction Mr. McKenzie was making was special exception versus proper. In a special exception, you can sit up there and say, we want you to have a blue building, and they have to have a blue building if you condition that.
But if, in a rezoning, we can't say, we want you to have a blue building. They have to say.
It would have to be proper or part of their GDP. That is correct. And that is part of the application process as we go through it.
But as, as in Mr. Forehand's compromise proposal, I have, I have a site that, that has rolling hills. I want to build a building between those two hills in a valley. On one side of the hill, the building's only thirty feet tall. But in the middle, it's ninety-five feet tall. I'm going to have to come to you and say, when I do my GDP, I, my building's going to be ninety-five feet tall in the middle, right?
If they could meet the appropriate setbacks for ninety-five foot tall, then yes, then it could be ninety-five feet in the middle. That is correct.
So, so is it better to have no definitions in this and make them all in the rezoning, as he's saying? Or have definitions in this and then make the applicant modify his application every time, or each time we get one?
And the basis, the basis, when I looked at how Ashburn does it, and Ashburn, we're looking at large parcels for a potential campus, you know, six, eight, ten buildings. They, they will rezone a five-acre parcel for a data center. And then they put height restrictions, setbacks, and, and it changes for every one to, to meet the, the general development of that, of that specific area. And, and I, looking at that, I think, honestly, I think, I'm sure they have something generalized for them. I didn't get that far into it, but I did see that and was able to pick that out, that they do that each parcel differently. And it's, again, if, if it's a downhill slope and there's a fifty-two-foot building, then they'll say that, all right, you can have a fifty-five-foot building with a setback of, you know, eighty-two feet or something like that, that, for this parcel. Anyway, I just, just, just a thought, so, thank you.
I kind of, I kind of liked it, but Ms. Long, go right ahead.
Yes, and does that sit also for all the setbacks? Like we had said down here in FG, it says for RPA and RMA areas, a five-hundred-foot setback. Well, I live over on the map, and I can, I can build a house two hundred feet off the river edge. But again, could we go either way? Say, again, my example of a, an educational building. Say Mary Washington wanted to put a, a campus down there. We have definitely wetlands, sandlot on the org property, but you could put some nice pathways within a hundred foot of that MRA without coming out three hundred feet for students to walk and enjoy and, and study, hopefully. So are we also able to play with these? Are we set with setbacks? Because you said something about the forty-foot being able to be increased or decreased. So all the setbacks would be able to be adjusted?
So like I said, it, it is a part of article eleven of zoning ordinance. Within that, within that.
Liam, move your mic so we can hear you better.
Sorry. With, within that section of the ordinance, the provision is there that if an applicant asks for an alternative standard, the board has the ability to either grant that alternative standard or not to grant that alternative standard. If the, if an applicant came along and use Mr. Forehand's example, if the topography was such that there could be some unique design characteristics or specific to that property, then that applicant would, could ask for that, and then the board could certainly grant that. And those will become the governing documents for that individual case.
Can we ask for those?
As a part of, as a part of the negotiation process and as a part of the application process, you can ask for it. Yes, you can. What, what Mr., the attorney was making, what Chris was saying, is that you can't demand from your dais, you can't condition that. So this process is.
You mean like when I say, I'm not allowed to ask you to do such and such? And Mr. McKenzie always jumps up and says, you can't do that? That kind of thing?
Essentially, yes.
We understand you can't make demands on a rezoning application.
That is correct.
During the public hearing.
That is correct.
But during the process.
During the process.
There are times when, you know, folks can, can say things about the project.
That is correct.
Okay. So has that made more concern or less?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm hammering down on this because I want to be like triple, quadruple sure. So if, if we have, and I do like Mr. Mr. Forehand's suggestion, actually. But let's say that we have something that's very restrictive and the applicant says, hey, this is why we need, you have sixty-five feet, and this is why we actually need ninety-five feet. And our PERT says sixty-five feet. And it's in an area that we're like, hey, it's not very controversial. It's not near a waterway. It's, you know, it's close to an industrial area, it's close to growth. Can we go, in that case, less restrictive?
Yes, you can.
So I can go more restrictive or less restrictive?
Yes, and the way that was shown.
No matter where I, where I am.
No matter where you are.
Or.
Yeah, I, I'm just, I, I understand.
You don't have to have a PERT in that area at all.
Right, well, yes.
It's up to us.
Right.
So that's why we take it individually.
I'm making sure for the public, I know, I'm understanding. So it's, it's clear, it's on, it's out there that, so we can take these on a case-by-case basis and nothing is automatic. That when they come in, yes, I'm, but I'm hammering down on it over and over again because I want to make that point that one application may be very different than the second application. It's different than the third application. So it's not a one-size-fits-all here.
Just tell us when the horse is dead. You think so? You good? Jeff?
No.
No, Black?
For now.
Okay. Jeff Sealy?
If you live in a subdivision, which is essentially what a PERT is, correct? We're going to make it a subdivision. We're going to make it a unique subdivision that you can only do certain things in, correct?
You're going to make it a unique district. I wouldn't use the term subdivision.
It's not a subdivision.
Call it a district, but you can only do unique things in it.
That is correct. You can do.
So to have something in a unique district, okay? You've got to have requirements that make everybody understand what they can and can't have. So what we're sitting here tonight saying is that we're writing requirements, but we're probably not going to follow them. You just, you just said we could go higher, we could go lower. It doesn't matter who does it. It doesn't, it depends on where it is, who's got it, and what we do.
We're writing guidelines, I would think.
We're writing requirements.
Yes, but Mr. Sealy, in, in just about every rezoning case, I assure you that you've ever seen, there has probably been some negotiation towards some item in an ordinance. I would venture to say there are very few rezoning cases that come through the process where an applicant is, has stuck in, stuck in, where that case is written or approved to the letter of the ordinance. So your, the current ordinance right now builds that flexibility in. This is not unique to this district. Every other use that is identified or every other CUP in article eleven has that same standard. So the standard is not new for this district. That standard exists today in the current orders. If someone showed up tomorrow with a rezoning application for a PIP district, there are some guidelines in that PIP district. But if, if there were unique circumstances that needed to be addressed as a part of that case, then we would address them through that rezoning application, and you would mitigate for those impacts.
This has been, this has been this way for, well, since the ordinance was first written.
That is correct.
Probably thirty years ago, if not more.
That is correct.
And again, we are, you know, we're, we're all focusing on specific issues because we have in our mind specific applications. But, but this is creating a definition, and, and each application will be voted on separately. We'll have its own planning commission meeting and public hearing, its own board of supervisors, public hearing, where all of these details can be hammered out again on an individual case-by-case basis. Correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I, I would, I would agree with you until our recent history. We keep changing our minds, and this makes this worse because we agreed on something and then we didn't. And then we agreed on something else and then we didn't. So we write this, and I've spent a lot of time in this, probably more than anybody sitting up here. I've read this thing and marked it up four separate times. I, I mean, I, I can, I go back and forth in this thing, and I asked some of my questions and then beginning to come back to solar panels because we still haven't resolved what we're going to do with that.
You still have those notes to address? We're just trying to find the actual.
I just.
Endpoint.
We have a whole lot of people looking at us about what do we really mean with this? Because when they hear we can do whatever we want, then what did we write this down for? And we've never hit this kind of scrutiny on anything before because we've never had this kind of discord before.
Well, I would, I would beg to differ. We've had this kind of scrutiny and we've had much worse discord than this. But the reality is, again, we are creating a definition. We're saying, we're saying all four-sided things are rectangles. We all agree. Occasionally, there'll be a four-sided thing that's called a square. It's different than the rectangle. That's, that's where we are. It's still going to be the same kind of thing. I don't know how, how much simpler to make it. All, all squares are rectangles, all rectangles aren't squares. But the reality is, this is a definition of a four-sided thing. During the rezoning issue, we'll have specifics of what it actually is.
So you're correct, Mr. Sealy, in, in the current one, and I've missed, like, I've miscalled it. It's the planned unit development, article eleven, it's planned unit development. There are five identified planned unit developments that you can apply for right now. Within any of those five, if there are unique circumstances specific to a case, then the board has the ability to accept alternative standards that are specific to that case. So this is, this ordinance will become another division within the planned unit development section where those same principles would apply. If there are unique circumstances that relate to an application that need to be addressed to mitigate an application, then that can occur with the board's blessing or with, with not. So like I said, if anyone showed up with a residential development and they wanted to do something specific that was unique to a residential development, they came in and asked for this planned unit development residential, they could ask for whatever particular requirements, bulk standard, meaning setbacks, buffer yards, that they wanted for that particular application. And there are standards here right now in the ordinance. So this, you know, the fact that we identify these standards does not mean that we are just going to throw it away because someone asked, because they may ask, it doesn't mean they, they necessarily mitigate the impact. And so the board might not agree with that. And staff would most likely not agree with that.
Okay, we still got solar panels to deal with.
So, you know, you can very easily, if you want to write a sentence that specifically says you cannot use solar panels other than for data center use.
Backup.
As a backup facility with no more, no more than, you know, twenty-five thousand square feet, then, you know, I just threw the number out there, whatever number you want, then you can do that. And I think that would address your concern about the larger panels. But I, I would tell you, if someone was going to build a very large solar field and they would be building that probably with the intent of trying to sell that power generated from that. Yeah, and our ordinance has a specific definition for that type of use. And that use is, would not be an ancillary use in this ordinance. So you could not do that.
Yeah, and if they connected, if they connected to the grid, you would then be able to say you violated the zoning application you had.
That is correct.
Okay. So we are going to take the three hundred feet that, that wasn't in the original one. We're going to take that out, which, which gives us the flexibility to make it more restrictive. And is there a sentence for solar panels? You want one or you?
I think there should be one so there's no, nobody anticipating they're going to come and they're going to put some monster solar field with, that comes with other issues.
Where do I? Mr. Hughes, can you just generate a sentence? And tie it back to, I mean, backup, emergency backup only?
They, they may want to power their own facility. Yeah, on the rooftop to do their own thing.
Solar panels. Solar panels may only be used, uh. To power this, the facility and or emergency backup.
So I think.
Something like that.
Something like that, but, so if you look at special uses under G. Talks about rooftop solar as a special use. Accessory use, I'm sorry. Accessory use. So you could there. In print, say something like. No solar panels. In excess of. Five thousand square feet will be used or maybe permitted, something like that.
Yeah, I mean, rooftop solar energy structures. And. I was gonna say, and, yeah.
Question, clarify question.
Please.
Is the concern, so the rooftop solar. You've got, I think we're talking about two different types of solar, and I think it might be helpful to clarify what we wanna address. Solar panels on the roof of the structures and solar panels on the ground. Right now, the accessory uses speaks to solar panels on the use of the structures. And right now, the ordinance as written says, you can put solar panels on the roofs of the buildings. As long as it's accessory to the principal use, so that means, yeah, as written, you know, it would have to be. Accessory to the principal use of whatever your permitted principal use is, you can't have a solar farm on the roof. As a separate principal use. The thing that's not specifically addressed right now is solar on the ground at all. Um, and whether that would fall in within, um. Backup energy facilities, or I think it was, uh. Uh, utility, onsite ancillary utilities J. So if you wanted to clarify ground uses. You could probably put them in either one of those. To say, you know, for example, D already reads backup energy and fuel storage facilities for individual buildings. This is limited to quantities of hundred twenty hours, so, you know, you could, you could put in a, a sentence that said. You know, solar panels installed as a backup energy facility, um, are limited to. You know, a certain quality, quantity or square footage, if you're comfortable setting that. Or you could put, um, something in J to say onsite ancillary utility facilities. And then you, you could say, you know, we, we. If those are gonna be solar, these are restrictions, or we're gonna say, you know, excluding solar. Um, because, again, as I think Mister Hughes has already pointed out. Solar is a defined, minor and major solar facilities, you all know this well, because we went through it multiple times, are still defined uses.
Right.
Uh, but they are not permitted in any district in the county right now. So anything that would trip into that definition, minor or major solar facility. Would automatically be prohibited, because it's not a permitted use, principal use anywhere in the county. So, uh, you know, if you were gonna make an amendment, I would focus on those three sections. And I'm happy to continue to try to.
So, so we could just say. Ground solar as approved by the board of supervisors. We do, we have a definition.
We have a definition, but we don't have an ordinance.
Yeah, but if they wanna put up ten panels, that's okay, but if they get to what. The definition minor is, then that's not okay.
Uh, uh, yeah, absolutely not, because, again, I think, you know, we gotta back out one level to say, we're talking about accessory uses.
Right.
So at, you know, to, to even be part of the conversation. For solar in this perk district, the only way it's even part of the conversation is if it's accessory to the principal use.
Right.
Um, and I think Mister Thomas, to your concern, I mean, someone can't, you know, bait and switch as far as saying I want this and then. Starting a principal solar farm, that would be impermissible and violate the zoning order.
Yeah, cuz once you got to what we defined as minor, even though we no longer have a solar ordinance. You get to minor and it's, oh no, that's not allowed.
Correct. Uh, so.
Okay.
Yeah, the question is, as an accessory use, again, to, to recap, it is allowed on roofs. Right now, this says you can put it on your roof as long as it's accessory to the principal use, I think the question before the board now is. Do you want to explicitly address the concern Mister Sealy raised about, what about an accessory use either as backup?
Just leave it on the roof.
Uh, roof is the only place it should be permissible.
So, so if that's what you wanted, you could put in something to say in both.
No, we're just saying, we're just gonna leave it on the roof, we're not even gonna talk about ground solar. Unless the applicant has some sort of idea that he wants a backup facility of solar and then, well, you know, we'll talk about it then.
Because by saying on the roof, it's pretty much saying that's the only place.
That's the only thing that you can. Come by, by definition. Alright, thank you. We took the three hundred feet out of buffer yard. We've settled solar panels, I think those were, Mister Black, your question was height back and forth, we can. We can modify that.
Yeah, I mean, I was just using that as an example, but, yeah, I mean, that's what I was trying to. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you, sir.
We can, we can modify the setback from the RPA or, or MA based on the project.
Yes. Any other discussion?
So the other item we have not addressed is the exclusion of rooftop materials or mechanical equipment. So right now, it, it is an exclusion that does not permit anything above the height. Such as couplers, parapets, antennas, ventilators.
I thought we had said as long as it was screened in, they could. Put stuff on the, on the roof.
That was the original ordinance, but the language has been added that excludes those as.
At the first reading. That's why I would like just to exclude the height and make it by zoning. Request, because again. Some will want forty-five, some others, if it's two thousand feet from a roadway. No one's gonna see it, then maybe we could let it go higher. But it's, again, it, that's, that's the basis of. With my suggestion is that all these sites are gonna be different, and even buildings within the site. The ones that are more visible, we might want smaller ones that are backed down on a hole. We may not really care a whole lot, how, how many, you know, if it's ten feet tall and the one out front.
Um, if we're saying they can have solar on the roof. Then they can have other things, but it should be screened somehow to blend with the building.
Yes, I would agree with that.
So the, so the bottom line is, it's got a height requirement, including what's on the roof.
That is correct.
You're saying.
I, I'm, I'm saying.
Take the roof height requirement off.
Uh, uh, address the height, make, make this document silent. To the height of the building.
Oh, totally.
And have that address specifically in the zoning application. Because the, of the varying topography of the different sites that could be, that could roll through here.
I like that, but, but I think Mister Hughes was telling us that, um, a definition was preferred.
No, that's, I mean, you could certainly say height to be determined, you know, by the board of supervisors at the time of rezoning, if you want to. If that's what you prefer.
I mean, I would like, honestly, I'd like that, along with the, the external setbacks, I'm fine with the internal setbacks, but the external setbacks. You know, if I were gonna back off the North End, I would want it bigger, if I, if it was a swamp. That's adjacent to the, the, the Poe River. That's two thousand feet from the nearest roadway or house, then I'm, I might be okay with it being closer to the RPA. And different, different locations would warrant different. Uh, restrictions and setbacks and heights and things like that, and I, and I would just be reluctant to. I, I, I like the way documents are written and as, as a guide, but. The more exceptions, and again, just adds, adds issues later, but, um. I like what we put down to be. At least ninety percent of what we're gonna want.
Alright, so. At, at the board's will, do we wanna remove height from the. Building. Requirements?
Let's get Mister Hughes a moment to come up, Chris, to come up with a definition. On how to word that. Protect us all.
Well, this is, this is gonna be removing words.
Well, so, and I think, I mean, certainly work with staff on this, but I think deleting the height. Wouldn't be my recommended approach, because I, I think we need to make clear that there is going to be a height restriction in this district. Um, and I think that's particularly important, because there are other districts in the county. That authorize data center uses and have a, have a height restriction of over a hundred feet. Um, and so we need to be cognizant of the fact that the other districts are now. Importantly, those aren't in the plan unit development ordinance, so those are, those are separate districts. Um, but, you know, I, I certainly think you need to, obviously, height and setbacks are concerns. So I don't think it would be advisable to adopt the district without any stated. Any, any provisions addressing those concerns, I think, you know, if we're not gonna do. You know, maximums, um, or minimums, depending on what you're talking about. Um, it needs to have some kind of language saying, these are going to be established and you are going to have maximum minimums, I think. One of the, one of the practical challenges is gonna be, you know, people are, prospective applicants are gonna call. Planning department and say, I have no clue even what the, the ballpark is. You know, whether I can build a, you know, something to two hundred feet or twenty feet or, or what. Um, and, uh, you know, the answer, I think, based on this session would be, you're not gonna find that out until you go to the board. Uh, and get their approval, um, on your application and, you know, that's. If that's the way you wanna approach it, that's, that's fine, but I think you'd have to put something in there to make clear that this is, these are the rules of the game in this district.
Might, you could put something along the lines of, uh, setbacks and, and heights would be dependent upon. Uh, individual site topography, comma. Distance from roadway, visibility, buffers, et cetera, you could do the. Which, which basically is everything we would look at anyway. And it would be handled during negotiation, I mean, I, I get what you're saying, but at the same time, I, I, I see three different pieces of property in my brain. Right now, that would have three different sets of rules and setbacks and, and heights. And, and, um, that, that's creating my reluctance to say, yeah, let's put something down on paper. Because then, then you have the negotiation. From a, from a, you still, you still have that, that conversation, you still have to have it, because. You know, I, I, yeah, right, cuz we're not gonna get around that conversation either way.
Right, and I, and I think, yeah, and I, and I, I. Recognize that concern and would have to think about how to draft it, I think, you know, as it stands right now. The, what, the kind of the territory we've covered already as far as how you would approach one of these. You know, I think you stated it, but it bears repeating, each application is independent and site specific. So if you get one and you say, you know, just based on the topography of this application. A building of, of any, any industrial size is not gonna work, that's gonna be your, your, your concerns. Stated, and ultimately probably the reason that you vote against the application being approved. Um, you know. There are mechanics in the putt ordinance for you to say, for an applicant to say, I understand you've said sixty-five feet is your maximum. Here's why I think the site works to go higher than that. Or, 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 you know, and, and, and right now, they can say, I need to go higher, but I'm gonna give you one extra foot up to ninety-five. So that flexibility exists, um, but. That's what you have now, I think what's.
Yeah, we took it out at the first reading.
Okay, that's not, that's not there anymore, uh, it, I thought, that's, that's still there, yeah.
It is still in here.
Right, so that flexibility is there, um, now I think, you know, going one step further is what Mister Four hands proposing, which is. We're not gonna state anything about any even ballpark height, and it's all gonna be case by case. Um, and, you know, I, I think we could look at revise, I think revising that here would be a, a challenge as far as each. Just finding language that's clear for the record about what's being adopted, if we're gonna go to the buffers and the setbacks.
And the height is on page eleven.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, but I think there is a fair amount of, um, there, there, I guess, just based on your ability to approve or deny any given application. You can, that is a threshold requirement as far as heights and setbacks and things like that, and then they can be tailored somewhat, but if you want. More control, yeah, I think you would have to go back and rewrite all those numbers. Um, and effectively find a way to delete them and say, you know, you're, we're gonna take these on a case by case basis. And I think one concern would be, is that gonna drive things to the M one district, the other ones where you have a data center already allowed. With a, with a hundred foot plus height restricted, height maximum. So that's probably more of an answer than you want it, but.
Because you're saying there is by right for some of these on parcels of the authority zone, correct?
For M one, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Right.
Well, and the other part of that is, we are, we are proposing to bring an ordinance forward that says. Those by right uses in the M one, B one and PIP districts would have to be developed in accordance with the perk standards. So.
But, but I've got land right now in M one, I can start building a hundred foot data center tomorrow.
A hundred foot anything, yeah.
Yeah.
Or, you know, a, an air separation tower or a sawmill.
Yeah.
You know, there, there, there are other things out there that are tall, hell, a grain silo could, would, would exceed that.
Well, we've got the, we've got the sixty-five to ninety-five, um, how does the board wanna go ahead?
We could add some languages that, you know, variants outside of this would require, would be addressed out during zoning, that way we're, it's at least written there that. We, we address, we address variants to this during the rezoning process.
And they're gonna have the effort anyhow in the rezoning, so. Okay.
What's the, sorry, could you just restate what you want?
We, we could leave it, but there could, you know, we could add a language to it that said there could be. Adjustments based upon topography setbacks, again, the list goes on, that could change. Maximum minimums and things like that. Would that be?
That, like I said before, that, that language already exists.
Okay.
In the, in the ordinance.
By definition.
Right, but in this section of the code. So it, this section of the code was designed to give you flexibility, that, that is the basic tenet of. The plan unit development ordinance is that it allows you to customize and make adjustments as necessary.
Are we, are we overthinking this?
Yes.
No more questions? Motions in order, up, down?
What did we decide on setbacks?
Uh, that was in there, the, the five hundred foot setback?
Yeah.
The one item we have not decided on are the exclusions for the rooftop mechanicals. Are they, are you gonna keep that in or are you gonna take that out?
The, as part of the height, that's what it was.
So, but, yeah, but it's more than just, I use rooftop mechanicals as a broad term, I mean, it. You, you could have a penthouse where there's no, uh, human occupancy or intended o- office space there. And it would extend potentially, you know. Above that limit, right now, the way it's structured is sixty-five feet. Maximum of ninety-five, that's it, that is inclusive of parapets and everything, that's it.
I don't think it couldn't, it shouldn't include that, cuz you could have an antenna, as it says, antenna.
Right.
Or communications tower. Or a satellite dish.
I, I understand, I'm just saying, that was the, that was the language that was requested to be put in, I said, that's the one item we have not decided, is it gonna stay or, or not?
Cut it out, not just.
Cut it out. You, you have to get to allow to, um, Mister Black, leave it in, take it out?
I mean, I guess, to me. Once again, it seems like we're overthinking this, because it goes back to what Mister Hughes said, and that's what I was saying, it, it, when it comes to rezoning, a specific rezoning, he said we can. Go on a case by case basis.
I understood that.
So I guess my question is, why do we keep on, if this goes.
So I guess my question is, why do we keep on, if this goes by a case-by-case basis, why am I, why am I continuing to argue this? I, I mean, what's, what's, what's the point? I, you, you know, I guess that's where, that's where I am.
You're exactly right. You know, the only point is, is that
It just seems like we're over complicating this and working people up, because we haven't even gotten to a real rezoning yet. I mean, this is, this is kind of like, it's, it's not reality until we get a rezoning, and then that's the case-by-case basis.
Blow in the cart before the horse. This is just a four-sided thing.
Well, you want, you want to set your standards for your district, though. I mean, it's, it's actually not the cart before the horse.
We need a definition.
So applicants know what to, what the goal is and what the, what they're trying to achieve.
But we're not trying to fit this to something. We're trying to give people guidelines, so when they come in to apply, they know what the, what the guidelines are, what you can and can't do, and if, if there's anything you want to go beyond, then there's going to be a problem.
Correct.
That's what this is for.
You, you have to ask.
Right. And then we make the decision that doesn't, so, that's what we said before. Right. All right, so we're going to take out, we're going to take out the antenna. Yeah, not include that as part of the height. We're not going to include that as part of the height.
So you're going to exclude it. It still has to be screened, but you will exclude it from.
Correct. Which goes back to the language you had before.
Correct.
And the river waterway setback. Again, that's per application to. Correct?
Yeah, an applicant would have to ask that they'd be excluded from that if it's written, if it remains in. Correct.
And that's all they do as part of their rezoning application, just add that in their rezoning application. And then during the public hearing, we have also to discussion about it from there. Okay.
Yeah, my only, my only point to that is you're going to, every application you see, you're probably going to see a, a request for that not to be included as a part of their application. Because right now there's already environmental restrictions. There's a three-hundred-foot buffer right now with the RPA and RMA along water features, so.
So we've made it five hundred feet to be more restrictive, but they're going to come back with what you're saying and say, can you go back to three hundred feet, which is?
No, it says in addition to, right now it's eight hundred feet. You know, it's six tenths of a mile away from a, from a swamp.
Right.
Which I think is not practical.
That's not six tenths of a mile, but.
Well, it's rough math.
Eight hundred yards would be six tenths of a mile.
Well, it's five thousand two hundred and sixty feet in a mile, two hundred eighty feet.
Yeah. I ran the quarter once, so I remember.
Mr. Black, are you okay with the state recommendation of three hundred feet back?
I mean, in the end, uh, uh, once again, I go back to this thing, it's, it's, if we keep it in there, which, you know, there's going to be certain areas where I'm going to want a bigger buffer than in other areas. So, I mean, but the applicant, if we keep it in there, I mean, I would like to keep it in there and just say, we'll take it on a case-by, but it's all on a case-by-case basis. So you keep it in there, they can come and say, you take it out, I mean, it doesn't, uh, we keep it in, they come to us in, in an area where we say, hey, we don't really need that kind of buffer in this area, because we're not near a waterway. Well, then you take it out, because it doesn't, you know, it, it doesn't even make sense, or it's near a swamp and it's not like a, um, you know, it's not like a waterway where people have nice homes and, and they want to keep it preserved as more so than the, the swamp area that's near an industrial area. So I, I guess to me, whether we keep something in and take it out, really in the end, what Mr. Hughes is saying is, does it really matter?
That's what Mr. McKenzie said, and he's the county lawyer, so.
I think, I mean, I, and I, I don't, I don't mean to contribute to the, you know, drawing this out, but I'm, I'm going to.
But you're good.
Yeah.
Thank you as much.
So, you know, I think it's been mentioned, but obviously the goal would be to keep the uniformity and to limit adjustments. So, you know, to, to Mr. Hughes' point, if there's something in here that everyone anticipates to be requested, is removed time and time and time again, it shouldn't be in there. Now, to your point, Mr. Black, if there's something where you think, no, this would be a useful standard in many cases, that it should be in there, and you can use the flexibility of the PUD to alter it if you need to. But I think the guiding principle should be, this is generally what we're looking for, and we're going to make tailoring fits as permitted under the PUD ordinance on a case-by-case basis. But if there's something in there that you think is unnecessary or inappropriate or wrong, then obviously it shouldn't be in there. So here, I hear you articulating, you know, this, this five hundred feet is along all rivers. So, you know, the RMA and the RPA applies to, you know, water, water bodies in addition to rivers. So this is specific to rivers. And if it's something where you think, no, this is, in many cases, this is what I would want to see on an application that I would support rezoning from Ag to PERC, then it's, you should, you, it would be a reasonable standard to include. You know, and if it, if, but if it's not something you want to use, don't put it in.
And we can delineate between like flowing a river, I mean, you can delineate between a, a flowing river and a, and a swamp area, right?
I mean, this says along all rivers.
Along all rivers.
Yeah.
And there's cases where we but some rivers are ten feet wide in this county. There's one running beside Ladysmith Village that eight hundred feet would make the whole development go away.
Yeah.
Just to be clear.
And, and the three hundred feet is a standard throughout all of our zoning.
Well, that's, that's a DEQ.
Because that's right, that's a state standard, so we can go with the state standard of, of, of three hundred, and when the case calls for it, we can always add more. Most of them, I think what you just said is, most of them are.
Well, you, you, like, I, I mean, to be a little clear, like, you couldn't just add it, because this is a rezoning, so that you'd have to say, boy, I'm, you know, this is not a good site for me, because I wouldn't be supportive of it, because it's too close to a river. Uh, and, and, you know, absent some kind of proffered conditions that address that concern, I would, I'm not going to be supportive of the application. That's how this rezoning process works, yeah.
Okay, back to three hundred? And I think we under, and where we are?
Well, three hundred's already required by state law. That's what we're saying.
Can we, would the board be willing to go to, I mean, because if we can make the, I understand what Mr. McKenzie's saying. Could we add it, because I thought in the last meeting was total of five hundred. That was, I was looking for a total of five hundred-foot buffer. And I didn't realize it was five hundred plus three hundred, and now eight hundred. Can we go down to a total of five hundred, so that would add ours, our, uh, two hundred in there, so you go five hundred, and then take it? Because you want to say it has to be in a, you want to be in a, in a close proximity, right? Is that what you're saying?
But you have the chance to make it five hundred when the rezoning comes.
I mean, I, I guess in the end, I was talking to Mr. Forehand about it, w- w- we're, whether it's five hundred or two hundred or one hundred or whatever, I mean, the applicant can still come to us and say, this doesn't make sense for this area, right? Or we can even say in this rezoning, like, this is such a resource-sensitive area, like, five hundred, like, we can go more strict, correct?
Well, I mean, that's, again.
No, you both know.
You, that's, and that's what I was, when I say these are all site-specifics, because you're going to get an application for a site, say, I want to change the zoning there. And you're going to say, I'm.
We're arguing over something to me that, yeah, it, 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 it doesn't, but I do want to, I do, I would like to send a message that at least like we're going to look at areas that are in resource-sensitive areas much more stringently than areas that are not. And I know you can make an argument for everything's a resource-sensitive area. I, I get that, but there are definitely some areas in Caroline that are on the, you know, certain, certain rivers that people live along where, yes, people don't have expensive property on the South River. You know, it's, it's a tiny river, but the North Anna, the Matapanai, the river, uh, the Rapa Hanak. You know, those rivers are much wider and those are much, you know, people go with those for recreation, people have nice homes on them, and I understand why they don't want a two-hundred-foot data center in their, in their backyard.
So, Mr. Black, if you look under section five, additional submission requirements. Item, item five. Item six, I'm sorry.
What section again?
Section five is on page four. Number, number six. Demonstration through project citing and proposed mitigation. If necessary, that the development mitigates visual impacts and promotes harmonious development to adjacent properties designated scenic roads or rivers, or historic property designated in the Virginia or National Register of Historic Places. So, when you, you speak, uh, making sure that we're going to ensure that we're looking at these more stringently, I think this language, that's a submission requirement. The applicant has to demonstrate that
I get it.
That they are want to mitigate any potential impact on those resources.
Right. I mean, to me, I'd rather just keep the two hundred and make five hundred, but, I mean, the applicant can come in, in front of us and say, hey, look, I, would the board be opposed to that, so you make a total of five hundred? And then the, the applicant's going to come either way, anyway. I mean, the writing, uh, we've been told a million times, doesn't really matter that much.
Okay.
That sounds good. So you got additional two hundred feet?
Yep.
That makes it five hundred total.
Yes.
And applicant may require or may request removing the county's two hundred feet, but they cannot remove DEQ's three hundred feet.
That's, that's state law.
No, it cannot.
All right. So, changes, we took out buffer yard, we took out the three hundred feet there, solar panels are roof-only. Height is still sixty-five to ninety-five and five hundred-foot buffer around, uh, rivers. Those are changes we made, discussions we had. Any other discussions? Motion would be in order? One way or the other?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we, um, approve the, uh, text amendment ten dash twenty-three. In orders, um,
With the changes we just got.
With the changes that the board has.
Is there second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, motion's made by Mr. Underwood, seconded by Mrs. Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, nay?
Nay.
Mr. Forehand, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Sealy?
Nay.
Mrs. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Underwood?
Aye.
And I vote aye, the motion carries five to one. That is taken care of new business. Chief Loftus, um, supplemental appropriation for backfill firefighters. You were going to come back to us with the numbers here?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. Uh, before you tonight, you, uh, pursuant to September sixth board meeting, where you requested that we bring back uh, cost figures for three firefighter EMTs to assist us with vacancies. As you know, we're in a highly competitive environment. We do lose a lot of folks, uh, through the course of a year. Uh, these three additional positions would be one per shift, and they would be, um, used to fill in when folks are in that vacancy period. Right now, we're using overtime. That's not very effective, because our firefighters, by their regular schedule, work twenty-nine hundred hours. Um, by forcing them to work additional overtime, we call that mandatory holds. We really put ourselves at risk. We keep them from going to sleep. In fiscal year twenty-three, we had a hundred and seventeen times where we told folks, you cannot go home. You need to stay at work, because we don't have enough people to meet the minimum staffing requirement. So these positions would help eliminate some of those times. Any questions?
How much overtime did you spend last year? Bless you.
In total, or just on?
Sure, in total first to get the, the big picture.
That, like, I don't have that.
What do you have?
I, I can tell you this, I mean, last year would have been somewhere in the neighborhood of four hundred thousand in overtime. Give or take.
And these three extra people starting January one would be a hundred and forty-two thousand.
I would anticipate we save about half of that in overtime. So we would, we would save about seventy-five thousand that we would normally spend in overtime.
That's, that's really what I wanted to get at, the, the, the net number.
There is a net number, and it's probably going to be about fifty percent of that cost, right off the top.
Okay.
Four ninety last year.
Four hundred and ninety thousand for overtime last year.
Correct. Keep, keep in mind, though, with the, our overtime, some of that's guaranteed overtime. As I said, everybody works twenty-nine hundred hours by their regular schedule. The law only allows us to pay them straight time for twenty-seven hundred and fifty-six. So each person gets a hundred and sixty-four hours of overtime guaranteed for you.
Because you have a special arrangement with FLSA.
We do, yes, sir. Two oh seven.
I seem to remember that in software. Okay, board members have questions of Chief Loftus?
Yeah, I'm still confused why we have forty-one thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars in overtime added into the cost of these three. When you, you've got overtime built into your budget, and you're saying you're going to save it, but we're building another forty-one thousand.
And anytime we hire anybody on the, the two oh seven K exemption, I got to pay them at least a hundred and sixty-four hours of overtime per person.
Right.
So overtime for us on average is about thirty-two dollars an hour, times that by one sixty-four, times three.
Because of their work schedule, they have to work, what is it?
Twenty-nine hundred and
Four tens or five tens or something like that?
They work, uh, either nine or ten twenty-four-hour shifts.
Okay, twenty-four, yeah. That was the police that were doing five. All right, so they're, they're on the clock for more than forty hours every week.
More than fif, yeah, more than fifty-six hours a week.
Yeah.
Mr. Black, or Mr. Sealy, so each person is going to have some level of overtime assigned to them, even if they're on a shift. Overall, we will save money out of the overtime budget, but when I hire anybody, I've got to account for that guaranteed overtime, um, overtime for holiday pay. Uh, if they work on a holiday or they work on the observed holiday, they don't get time and a half, but they get straight time. It does come out of the overtime line.
Yeah, that's, that's the reality, and, and there probably should be an overtime line in your budget and a required overtime line in your budget, so we could see the two.
They're, they're two different things. It's not a, it's not a choice that they're working overtime. It's by schedule.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Quick, quick question, um, that just now slipped my mind. Oh, the, um, the, the guaranteed overtime is that still accrued over the course of a pay period? And, and I'll use this as a reference. I used to work for a union electrical contractor. There was people that would call in on a Friday and take Friday off, and then come in and work Sundays, which are double time.
So, so for us, it, it doesn't work that way. For us, it works in a twenty-eight-day work period, and that's defined by Fair Labor Standard. In that twenty-eight days, you get overtime after two hundred and twelve hours. All of our folks are scheduled more than two hundred and twelve hours, so they're going to get guaranteed overtime. The second piece of that is a piece of legislation unique to Virginia, and it says, if you take annual leave or paid leave, sick leave annually, your, those hours are going to count in the calculation of overtime. That doesn't occur with any other employee, because they didn't work the physically, the forty hours in a week. So that is a unique piece to firefighters. So that why, that's why I call it guaranteed overtime. Even if they're sick or they take annual leave, there's, we're still going to pay that.
That's a game changer, and that's precisely what I was referring to. Like, you, you take two days off and begin maybe your pay cycle, and they're still getting overtime at the end of it, because, because of the Okay, thanks.
That's kind of why I say guaranteed. Uh, you want to stay for this vote real quick? Um, any other questions? This is the same thing we did for the sheriff. Um, is there a motion? Well, I'm, I'm going to make the motion since I brought it up. I'm going to move that, that we go and approve Chief Loftus hired three people starting January one.
Second.
All right, second by Mr. Black. All, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All oppose, nay, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. Um, I'm not going to do item number seven. We're going to do item number seven at our October twenty-fourth meeting, if that's okay with the board. It's also okay if we don't do it. Sorry, Mr. Hughes. Mr. Colley? You want to give us some informational and calendar items? It's ten o'clock.
Mr. Chairman, we've concluded the status of capital project report for your review. We have a Bowling Green Harvest Festival on the twenty-first, not this Saturday, but next. Um, and I was just discussing with Chris, our special meeting on the twenty-fourth at six, uh, with uh, the planning commission, and he's got some things that he wants to talk to you about how we may do that. And before he does that, Frog Level on the twenty-eighth, Frog Level, uh, festival. And then, as we mentioned earlier, on Monday, the thirtieth, uh, And then as we mentioned earlier, on Monday, the thirtieth, uh, at six thirty here in this room, our data center, uh, uh, town hall informational. Um, the offices are closed on the election day, other than the registrar's office, uh, uh, offices closed on the seventh. That's an Iowa state holiday. And they're then closed again on the tenth for Veterans Day. Uh, vacant, uh, conference starts on the eleventh and runs through Tuesday, uh, the fourteenth. And then the board meeting is on Thursday night. Remember that in November, Thursday night, the sixteenth at six o'clock. And then obviously the following Thursday is, uh, or, uh, is Thanksgiving, uh, holiday, Thursday and Friday. And do we get, uh, we get a half a day Wednesday? The governor do that? I didn't read that in email.
It was in.
Yeah, that's, we've been doing it forever.
Approval thing we did.
I knew y'all approved it. I just didn't, I thought.
Yeah, it's a half a day Wednesday.
Half a day Wednesday. It's been standard for twenty years. Um, and.
So, um, this just probably the last thing you want at the end of the meeting, but, um, the details on the procedure for a special meeting. We've done it once before in recent memory.
Yes.
But, um, this is different, a li- a little bit from just recessing to another meeting, which we've done some, you know, on occasion. That would be a continuation of this meeting. We're going to hold a joint special meeting. Um, we would just need the chair or two members of the board to request of the clerk that this special meeting be held and then we send out a letter to all of you saying that a special meeting is going to happen. Um, and we advertise it per FOIA and all the places. I mean, functionally, the real, uh, notice is going to be the, the rezoning notice that's required under twenty-two oh four that goes in the paper two times, fourteen days at least ahead. Um, so really here, all we need is a direction from the chair or two members of the board that the clerk send out the letter to all of you that this special meeting is going to happen. It's going to tell you something you already know, but this is what the Virginia code requires us to do.
Alright, does everybody want to meet on the twenty-fourth?
And that, and that's to consider the rezoning application.
For, uh, Madamie?
Madamie, yeah. Yeah.
And we have a couple of other things we didn't have on the agenda tonight, uh, if we can get ready, um.
Well, we're going to check on those tomorrow or next Wednesday.
What are they?
Uh, memorandum of understanding with the town of Bowling Green.
Okay. Oh, you mean where all the counties paying for the town of Bowling Green?
Reassessment contract.
I don't care.
The twenty-fourth. Same night. It, it's a special meeting, but you, you certainly could handle some other business and that reassessment and the MO, you're two things that we're not quite ready for tonight.
And, and.
And otherwise they got to wait till the sixteenth, which is middle of the month of November.
Right. If I have to do Mr. Hughes' repeal and replace on the festivals.
Continuation of our first reading?
Yeah, I said if I have to.
Okay.
The first reading was, was bad. Period. I, I assume this one's going to be bad again today, so. Alright, the, it, the entire board wants to direct the clerk to do that, not just the chair.
So we're going to pair those in, and I guess the last thing is that notice has to state everything that we're going to discuss the special meeting.
Just those four things.
So we'll put those four things in the notice, circulate it. If all six of you are there, you can take up additional items. Uh, but.
No, just those four things.
Yes, okay. We will do that.
Alright. Mr. Hughes, is, is that, is that okay with you? You can wait till, uh, twenty-fourth? Okay. I appreciate it. Alrighty, thank you very much. Gee, it's been such a fun day. We're, we're done.
Closing board comments.
Closing board comments. Um, Mr. Underwood?
It's been a pretty interesting meeting. And I think part of the issue is that there's so many rumors going around about what we've approved and what we haven't approved. And the person's got a right to apply and it's, it's up to this board to maintain and try to understand what we're trying to do for the county. And I think that's where it all, it gets lost in the all the rumors and, and comments. And I'm just, again, appalled by the Facebook information and the accusations, uh, to Mr. Hughes. I'm sorry, Mr. Hughes for that and it's disappointing as well. That's my comments.
Uh, I have, I do have a request of Mr. Hughes, uh, for myself particularly, but we have, I know you put the, the red line ordinance in our, our book. I would like your final draft without all the red lines because it's a lot easier on my eyes to, to read. If you could, uh, get that to me or stick it in my, in my, have Pam stick it in my folder for me. And then I can compare it with the old ones.
Can you email it to all of us? Without red line?
Well, I was, the, the one, the pert that we did tonight, really with all the corrections on it, you know, we've got a lot of lines out and then we've got new wording put and my eyes aren't as young as they used to be and these are new glasses, so. You know, that's just the way it goes. Um, I also wanted to ask, uh, whoever is in charge of doing these tables. I don't know if y'all can't tell it, but these tables are not in the same place. I am shifting all over because I cannot roll my chair up to the desk. So I'm over here, I'm doing this and this all night long because I cannot get up underneath here. So if we could next time, just make sure they're in our normal spots, I would appreciate it.
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
None.
Mr. Forehand?
Uh, Mr. Hughes, I appreciate your efforts and I know that we're difficult to work with sometimes. But I do thank you and I know that, uh, the first, if a, if a homeowner or, or landowner wants to build a home, the first call they make is to planning. Somebody wants to put a road in, first call they make is to planning. A developer wants to, to pitch something or see what's even allowed, the first call is to planning. The, the reach that you have and the people that reach out to you is pretty wide. And, um, I'm fully aware that even random conversations that, that, that people, people can take out of context and, and make it look terrible. And, um, but I, again, I, I support you and I here to help you however I can. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, Mr. Hughes, I was going to echo those same comments, uh, as as Mr. McKenzie, the county attorney, talked about how changes are made during rezoning process. They're not requested by the supervisor. They're requested by the county attorney, the planning, you know, director, county administrator sometimes. So you are the interface with us for a lot of things and, and we appreciate what you're doing. A lot of the discussion and, and the heated discussion that the board has been involved in was actually started before your time. So you kind of walked into it and didn't deserve some of the comments you got. And lastly, if you want to send stuff to your home email and work on it at home, that's your prerogative. It's, it's your work. Um, we just want to make sure we, you know, we do what's right for the county and that's what we're trying to do. So I appreciate the hard work you and the entire staff has and I think Mr. Cully can attest to the fact that when, when we end the staff meeting call, at least with me, I always say, thanks for your hard work and that applies to all the county staff. So I think we're all doing a great job and I do appreciate your efforts. So on that note, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, aye? Boom.